All right, welcome everyone. We're going to start tonight's meeting, so I'm going to call to order the August 13th, 2018 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Dubach, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you can.
Tonight, we're all here for the same reason. We love our community and we're willing to dedicate our time and service to it, so that in 30 years, our children can be proud of the legacy we've left them. Our legacy isn't just about the decisions we make, but how we make them. We live in tragically dark and divisive political times, where petty insults and personal attacks are more commonplace than thoughtful debate and discussion. But it doesn't have to be that way here in our community. So as we gather once again to make decisions about our shared future, let's strive to be the best possible versions of ourselves. Let's set an example that inspires the next generation with how we represent our values, how we address each other, how we listen to each other, and how we seek to see the good in each of us. Let's leave a legacy of good governance where well-meaning people come together to build a stronger community and a more prosperous future.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're at the point of our agenda tonight where we have a proclamation designating September as ovarian cancer awareness month. Do you believe we have Mr. McEwen here tonight? So I'm going to read this proclamation. I might have to come closer here, I see my sight. This is a proclamation designating September 2018 as ovarian cancer awareness month. Whereas Thai Michigan teal is a statewide campaign designed to promote awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. And whereas teals in color representing ovarian cancer. And whereas ovarian cancer is the deadliest of all gynecological cancers, and one of the five leading cancer-related deaths among women in the United States. And whereas each year approximately 22,000 women are diagnosed with the disease, and 15,000 women will die. And whereas women diagnosed with ovarian cancer have an average five-year survival rate of 45 percent. And whereas unlike other cancers, there's no early detection test for ovarian cancer. And because symptoms, which are often subtle and mimic other diseases, awareness of symptoms is key to early diagnosis. And whereas Thai Michigan teal consists of volunteers tying ribbons on trees and signposts and providing local businesses and offices with symptom information cards. Whereas Thai Michigan teal takes place the entire month of September, and the city of Royal Oak supports their efforts to educate our residents and all members of the public about ovarian cancer and its symptoms. And now therefore, via resolve, I, Mayor Fornia, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby proclaim September 2018 as ovarian cancer awareness month. And will join Thai Michigan teal with communities across the state, and will have teal ribbons tied on trees and signposts, and informational cards will be distributed to local businesses and offices to raise awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. Mr. McEwen, this proclamation is for you. Thank you. And if you'd like, please, a few words, sir.
2012, February 28th, I lost my wife to this disease. Since then, I've partnered with them, and have had the pleasure of working with a lot of survivors. Can we be, and we're working together to beat this awful disease? Thank you.
I ask everyone to join in on the efforts. And if you have a teal ribbon, please put it up. This brings us to item number five, public comment. Before we begin, I know there's a number of people here that most likely talk about Mark Twain Park. And just before we proceed into public comment, just from the city's perspective, I wanted to give a little bit of a historical context of some of the things that have transpired for well over a decade as it relates to that property. For those of you that are aware, well, more than a decade ago, the school district sold the property to a private interest. They had the full autonomy and authority to decide who they wanted to sell that property to, and they sold it to a developer who intended to build residential property apartments on that land. This was in the school district's best interest, in their opinion. They made that decision. The property has changed hands on a few occasions. During this time, it was zoned residential one, single-family home residential. And a petitioner did come to the planning commission back in 2014 to have a planned unit development. The planning commission back in 2014 approved that development and came subsequently here to the city commission, of which it was approved. During that time, as is our standard process, I know a number of people have expressed concerns about notification, but during that time, we followed our standard process of notifying individuals via postcard about the pending hearings, et cetera. We do that for everything that comes before the planning commission. And on a number of occasions, we get people come out and supporting projects or protesting projects and, you know, informing and influencing the decision-makers at the planning commission and here at the city commission. So that process was followed. If that process needs to be improved or whatever, I mean, that's something that this commission is always striving to know what the best practices are. But, you know, we've been following the similar process that almost every other community follows. But, you know, we're always open to ideas that will always improve communication. Since then, you know, it's important that everyone understands that the city, you know, too much distress to the city commission here, trees are very important, I can tell you, to almost everybody up here. And, but it's important to know that with this particular piece of property, as a private property, whether it's owned by a residential homeowner or whether it's owned by a commercial entity, the city commission can't distinguish between the types of ownership. And, you know, once that property changed hands, once those approvals were made back in 2014, there's very little the city commission can do to, actually, there's nothing the city commission can do to halt or stop the development. It's also important to know that the purchaser of that property, because the property was zoned residential, you know, single-family home, that they didn't need to come to the city commission if they wanted to build a neighborhood in there. So, you know, we have, it's common here in Royal Oak, especially in some of the former school properties, that, you know, trees were cut and new homes were put up and new trees were planted. You know, the developer of that property would not have to have had to come to planning commission or city commission to do that, because they own the property, they're within the zoning, they had the right to do that. But they came with a PUD. Part of that PUD actually improved the situation. I know our city engineer was out talking about stormwater management, those sort of things. So with that PUD, the city commission and the planning commission could actually force the developer to use and put in better stormwater management, which is better for all of Royal Oak and better for the neighborhood there. So just a few things I've heard out there floating around, I wanted to clear it up. But I think the most important thing that I want to underscore is that, and I know Commissioner Dubach and I had a pretty strong heart-to-heart about this when the Kroger property got developed. We saw what happened to the St. Dennis School, all those beautiful mature trees got cut down. And it signaled to us, and it actually just, I can tell you, broke our heart. And we moved briskly with making sure that we put measures in place to preserve the canopy here in Royal Oak. And just to highlight a number of things that we've done, within four years, we'll have planted over 1,400 trees in Royal Oak. We're at a clip at 400 to 500 a year, which is unprecedented. We now don't even make it a question for the homeowner, when a tree is removed because it's diseased on the right of way, we come out and automatically plant a new tree there. It used to be that the homeowner was charged for that. We said, nope, our canopy's important, we found the money to do it, and we put a priority on it. And so we've taken great efforts with our tree canopy. Furthermore, with the zoning ordinance, we made sure that any time a planned unit development or anything comes before this commission, if there is a, we changed our ordinance to account for mature trees that are on the property. And if any trees are removed, one, the developer, the planning commission has to consider that criteria, and number two, if for whatever reason they have to be removed, you know, there's cost removed, that they have to replace those trees two to one. So not only are we looking at it and making it a condition, but in the event that you have maybe a property that has a mature tree that has to be moved for a better safety easement, they have to go and replace that tree with two. So we've taken great efforts since the Kroger development went in. Unfortunately, this development went in or was approved prior to us changing the ordinance and prior to us, you know, making these changes. So as much as we empathize and we understand, and it's difficult to see, you know, those trees, you know, be removed, I think this commission understands it, and we've taken action, and we've grown as a community. This was something that was never in place for, since 1921, since we were a city, before that when we were a village. So we have made progress, we do care about the canopy, we do care about our trees, but we have to understand the legal context that we're operating in. And there's very little, if at all, nothing legally the city can do at this point to prevent the development from moving forward. But rest assured, we have been making strides in the last couple of years, and literally you will see the fruits of our effort in your streets and in future developments. So I just wanted to, you know, get some of that information out before we begin public comment. So before we begin, just read a few rules, there's some new people here tonight. So if you haven't been here, public comment, there's a few processes we follow. The city commission does value and rely on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. And now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issue, both on the agenda and not. I do ask that your comments be directed to the entire board up here and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, to come up to the podium. And for the record, if you could state your name and address, that'd be very helpful. And please be mindful that we want to hear from as many people who wish to speak tonight. So comments are limited to three minutes or less, and there is a timer at the podium to help you with your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, never hesitate to reach out to us, email us, call us with your comments. We have a number of people that do that, some regularly, some as it relates to specific issues. Please note that the city commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address those questions when the agenda topic is discussed, or refer to the proper city department if the matter isn't scheduled to be discussed tonight on the agenda. Our city manager, I can tell you, he's got his application open up here, he's taking great notes, and he does look into matters as needed. So we just can't have a debate back and forth at public comment, or it'll be midnight by the time we get to our agenda items. So we do listen, but, you know, we put these rules in place every year, and, you know, we do our best to abide by them. I'm the greatest perpetrator, sometimes I do ask questions and bounce back, but I forget the rules sometimes, so keep me on check, please. All right, with that, who's first tonight? Yes, ma'am.
My pet law from 156 Iowa. It was recommended that we begin with introductory remarks by asking the people who are from Twain to please stand, or raise their hand if you can't stand. Thank you. And those who would, are in support of a discussion here but don't have anything in particular that they want to say to give their time to someone else, would you please stand? Those who don't wish to speak but would give their time to someone else. Okay, two more. Okay, does that work right? Okay, so that was, those were two people, and we'd like to give those additional six minutes to a spokesperson, Brian, at the end of the three-minute comments. And so he makes sure to summarize all the points that came up at meetings and talking together with neighbors. So thank you. We can start with the first one.
Okay. All right, who wishes to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
My name is Rob Duchesne. I'm a, I live at 4302 Auburn. That's the 13 Mile Greenfield area. I'm also a member of the Royal Oak Historic District Committee, also a former member at Detroit Audubon. I'm just here to talk about the idea of healthy communities, and a healthy community consists of a balance of residential, commercial, and public areas. I wanted to talk about the public areas that are devoted to nature. And by that, I'm not talking about dog runs, dog parks, or soccer fields, we're talking about areas that devoted to where birds can fly undisturbed and toads can wander where they will. As I drive through Royal Oak, I see these areas diminishing. In my own neighborhood, we had a green space slashed, we all know what's going on with Normandy Oaks, and then I heard about the 14 Mile and Campbell area. I went out there and looked for myself, it was really very, very sad. I want to say city fathers, but that's impertinent. City elders, I wonder if we collectively saw, lost sight of what does constitute a healthy community? I know there's bills to pay, but is selling off green space a sustainable plan for the future? What happens when you run out of green spaces? Man needs some connection to nature to feel whole. Royal Oak used to be referred to as City of Trees. As a matter of fact, Royal Oak, I'm sure you're all aware, was named after a tree. When I went to see that devastated area of 14 and Campbell, it left me feeling very, very sad. A well-planned area, a well-planned city requires more than thinking about parking places. Please help protect what green space we have remaining. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duchesne. All right. Anybody else here to speak at public comment tonight? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Anne Steffi from 1129 Ottawa, and part of me wants to come up here and say, why don't we have three minutes of silence for the trees? But no, you should have heard the noise, the week. It took them a week to take in every last tree in that woods. It just took them a week. When my kids went to Royal Oak schools, they read from a book called The Lorax, and he said, "I am The Lorax, I speak for the trees, for the trees have no voice." As this man just said, the people in this corner of the city were shocked. Most of us had no clue that this was happening. And all of a sudden, there are bulldozers and big, huge machines, and the trees are being cut down, you know, all of them, all of them. So I think part of what hurts us and angers us is that why couldn't have some compromise been made where the units were smaller, were less dense, and some of the trees were saved? Couldn't have that been negotiated somehow? I'm, it's too late now for these trees. But the whole northeast corner of Royal Oak is affected by this, not just a few people on the end. And I have a thought. A few people got a postcard, I happened to see in the Tribune a week or two ago, something of the city of Auburn Hills is doing. And here is the city of Auburn Hills that has all these notices about things that the planning commission is doing right here in the newspaper, and it says, notice will be sent via U.S. mail to properties within 1,000 feet of the site. And I think Royal Oak only sends it to 300 feet, not including the roadway, we were told the roadway didn't count, those feet. So we, we're angry, I think, because we feel sort of hoodwinked, like this snuck up on us. There's the bulldozers. A few people knew about it, most of us didn't. We can't be Sherlock Holmes. There are, you know, while we're not all dinosaurs here, some of us aren't on the internet, you know? And we aren't Sherlock Holmes, and we can't, you know, go on there every week and see what the city is up to. So this just got right by us, and all of a sudden, here's the bulldozers. So we're sad, we're angry, we're shocked. And ironically today, an engineer called me, a guy named Jeff Huda, you guys know about him? He's somehow involved with this planning, this park down here. And he called and he said, is the Middle Ottawa Block Club, he said, "We want citizens to be involved in the planning of this park." And I said, "This is great." Where was he or where was somebody calling the block clubs nearby when this development was going through in 2014? I mean, we can't go back and change it, the trees are gone. And we're really sad that the trees are gone, and we would like to see the city, you know, I can leave this to somebody, would like to see the city be more transparent in the future and let more people know, you know, let people within 1,000 feet know. Call the block clubs like this guy was calling today, and let us know so we can maybe feel like we have a voice for the trees and say, hey, can you keep a few? But not one will be left. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steffi, good suggestions. Who's next? Yes, sir, Mr. Ashley.
My name is Alan Ashley, I live at Royal Oak Manor. I'm primarily speaking in the consent agenda on the F statement with the engineering and traffic signals. I don't, I read through there and nothing was included about traffic signals for, in 6th and Main, for get people to cross the street, because still, it's very dangerous. I was at the DDA infrastructure meeting on another subject matter, and I brought this up to them. And one of the members, Jay Dunson, sent me an email, and he also sent it to the engineer, and he also agrees that somehow, somewhere, there's got to be two crosswalks, one at 6th and one at West 7th, which is the one-way street going west, or since there's no development in that parking lot across from Oakland CC, I think it's P8, to put a pedestrian crosswalk there. Because he even mentioned that most people coming south do not even look for pedestrians, they just run there, they're looking for their destination, whether it's Buffalo Wild Wings, Maury's, Top Hat, or one of the other restaurants. They do not stop for the little yellow sign that you stick in the middle. And he even mentioned in his letter, I think the city engineer got it, and I'll be talking to them Wednesday at the DDA to get this put on the agenda for there, but I want to know if this can be put into that discussion, F on the traffic lights, because it wasn't mentioned in there. We do need something, it's very, it's very important. People are going to be coming more and more after that construction on, in that parking lot seven is completed from, by Burtson-Casman sometime next year or the year after. But still, now you're going to have more people crossing the street, and there is, it's unsafe to cross. I was crossing there yesterday, five cars came right in front of me, didn't even stop. And Mr. Dunson said the same thing to me, to him, and he is on that committee, and he's even worried about people crossing the street. So I wish that you would please add it to the survey for the traffic lights in the city and add that, because it wasn't mentioned, no hint, I know it was probably done before I had brought it up, but I wish you could please add it to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Commissioner Dubach?
I think it's just worth noting that, I think we've demonstrated our willingness to work on this issue, unfortunately, it wouldn't be appropriate to add to this item, because this is a response to an RFP that was set out months ago and the awarding of a contract in response to a set of work that was issued months ago.
Goes to the traffic committee.
And it has to go to the traffic committee. So that suggestion's going to come up through the traffic committee, where that's work with the DDA to address the concern, but it is on the radar.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Are you going? Okay, I'm sorry.
Can I just pass this so you can look at it?
Sure, if you give it to the clerk, she can.
I'll state my name. This is the night before the woods started to be vandalized, these pictures here, and it started, and then you'll see the rest if you want to pass it.
My name's Mary Bogish, I live at 1418 Ottawa. And I have some prepared statements here. There's a plaza which contains a Star Dream sculpture and fountain located between the library and City Hall. The plaza is dedicated to a past Royal Oak mayor and commissioner named Barbara Hallman, who was a champion for preserving Royal Oak parks and trees. In the 70s, she helped me, then a teenager, to prevent a tennis bubble structure from replacing the forest in Mark Twain Park. It's too bad the Royal Oak mayor and commissioners don't have the same environmental ethics as the late, great Barbara Hallman. By this time, the bulldozers have leveled a forest of mature trees, varieties of oaks, maples, shagbar hickory, black cherry, walnut, elm, and others, many aged over 100 years. They were reduced to piles of wood chips in four or five days. These trees were home to a variety of wildlife, and particularly bird species, including the two hawks that were hovering low over their tree as the bulldozers began knocking down the forest. The forest continued to grow throughout my childhood years and provided us neighborhood kids a place to learn, explore, and which served as a buffer from the noise and exhaust fumes of 75 traffic. The hawks still circle and land in their one tree left, but their hunting grounds has been totally removed and stripped to the ground. The former mayor Ellison and the 2015 city commissioners, and you know who we are, who voted for this 186-unit Midtown Point development, had a choice to be good environmental stewards by keeping these trees and wildlife alive for the health of our community and planet. The neighborhood had spoken loudly in recent, in that recent past when less impactful developments were proposed but not developed. So when you built up our confidence and trust, you now have turned on us and permitted this total devastation. Aside from the 1,200 vehicle trips per day increase that your planning department predicted because of this development, what about the negative impact on our neighborhood health? Mark Twain Woods was the heart and life of our neighborhood. No longer will we hear the musical chorus of frogs, toads, and birds singing to welcome each spring, but instead, just bulldozers and I-75 traffic. You just saw a site plan and heard what your zoning board said. We saw and heard something entirely real. Did you personally ever set foot where the developers, in that forest? I watched the video archive of your May 13th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting where the developer states he wants to build rentals for people who want to stay in Royal Oak but can't afford to buy a house. Well, what about us who have worked so hard for so long to keep our houses? No sign indicating a development was put up until the day the bulldozers began rolling. And we longtime taxpayers deserve the respect of timely and proper notification of such an intense major development that negatively impacts our neighborhood health and quality of life. So you said not to name names, but the four of you that were on-
Ma'am, I really do need you to finish up your last thought.
The committee I voted for and was on a committee that endorsed you, and I regret it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Courtney Powers, 1514 Donald Avenue. As most of you may know, our family has been in the news recently regarding the extremely high water bill that we had received, and we aren't the first for this to happen, too. Again, most of you probably know the details, but at a high level, the city claims we used approximately 193,000 gallons of water over a 90-day period, giving us a bill of $3,600. I want to preface this by saying, I do love Royal Oak. My husband and I graduated from Royal Oak, we bought our first home in Royal Oak, we started our family in Royal Oak, it's where we wanted to be, until now. I have two issues I wanted to discuss with you today. First is the actual water bill. We are not the first family to have received a high water bill from the city, but in our case, it's a little bit extreme. 193,000 gallons in a 1,000-square-foot home with one running toilet. After reaching out to the city for an explanation, they sent out a tech to investigate possible leaks and inspect the meter. The tech saw no leaks within the home and no running toilets or such. The meter worked, but yet they still replaced it with a new one, anyway. Our water bill has gone back to normal now, and for whatever reason, because obviously we don't have a leak. The manufacturer of the old meter claims that a leaky toilet can lose an excess of 10,000 gallons of water per month. That's 30,000 gallons, not even in the same ballpark to 193,000. The city got the old meter tested and they concluded it was 99.6% accurate, but that still leaves room for error. And what is the process after you guys took the old meter out? Why did it sit around for two months before being tested? We had to ask for it to be tested. There's so many unanswered questions, but yet the city says that there's nothing they can do, that that's what the meter says, and that's what we have to pay. And no one is using common sense in this situation, it's 193,000 gallons of water. The second issue I have is how we were treated during this. I don't want to bash the city that I love, but my husband and I reached out many times to talk with someone that could hear us out. We called and emailed inside many departments, almost all departments, and we were completely ignored, lied to, laughed at, and belittled. We went to the media because of all this nonsense, because we weren't getting anywhere with any of you. It wasn't until the media showed up that you guys decided to speak out, because, well, now you're in the news. In conclusion, all I want is for a positive outcome, and I believe in people, I believe that there's good in everybody, so I just hope that the city will decide to finally do the right thing. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Who's next? Yes, ma'am. Just FYI, it's also the rule not to clap after each public comment.
My name is Susan Barcum Larson, I live at 232 East La Salle. Moved into that house with my parents in 1950 when I was three months old. My family has been here for 116 years. My great-grandfather bought a- My great-grandfather bought a farm at 11 Mile and Campbell in 1902. I am a big supporter of Royal Oak. We have, our family lives here, our aunts and uncles, our cousins, everybody we can talk into coming cuz it's such a wonderful place. Went to Oak Ridge Kindergarten, Shrine, Kimball, OCC. I'm a Royal Oak person. Um, I got a water bill as well. And I kept getting notices that they wanted to change my meter. We were going through some renovations with the city, um, and we couldn't do it until, I think it was in, in February. And in Fe, in March, we got the bill and we had a hundred-dollar credit. And I called and they told me, just don't pay your eighty-some-dollar bill. Then when I, in, in June, the next quarter came up and I owed them for a hundred dollars. And I called and talked to the city, and I was pretty much told, you own it, it went through your meter, and it seems to be the problem is the two meters don't match. Now, if they keep telling me that I have a defective meter, it needs to be replaced. Why am I being billed for the difference in the two meters that I don't even know are operating correctly? My husband and I live in that home. We just retired. Um, we don't have a dishwasher, we don't have a ice maker, we don't have all the, all the bells and whistles that the average family does. So, I don't understand. We're home all day long, and we go downstairs, we're all over the house, and we have not seen a leak. And then when I heard about the powers, I went, is this happening to all the people that have had their meter changed? I'd be really interested to find out. And if Royal Oak can't give me an answer, maybe the State Attorney General's office can. I don't know. It sounds pretty strange. And, uh, I, like I said, I love Royal Oak. We've been here 116 years, never a problem. But when I called, boy, it was not a pleasant experience until I talked to Kim Gibbs.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Maureen Bennett. I live at 4615 Hillcrest in Royal Oak. Three years ago, I got a water bill for $4,000. And my daughter had just passed away a few months before that, and I'm raising my grandson, and there's no way that two people, a small child and myself, could use $4,000 worth of water. And I had the same experience that this couple had. There was no, nobody cared. Nobody cared. All they said was, pay your bill. And what ended up happening is I fell behind. They set up a payment plan. Uh, I just, I was in the middle of grief. I, I had no energy to fight. And so, they ended up sending it to my mortgage company, and so now I'm paying it on my mortgage. Um, it's ridiculous. So when I saw them in the news, I was like, there's more than just me. I mean, how can you just not use common sense and say there's a problem here? You can't use $4,000 worth of water in three months. It's ridiculous. And, uh, and like she said, if it's a law, uh, you know, class action lawsuit, whatever, we have to do, but there's gotta be some answers.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Who's next? Once? Yes, sir.
I'll go first.
No, call it on you, Mr. Ellison. You're the first to draw there, so. Save the best for last, Mr. Wolf.
All right, good evening. Uh, Brian Ellison, currently living at 22515 Benjamin. Um, I, uh, I sent a message out to all of the commissioners and copied the city manager and the assistant city manager last night, so I wanted to make sure you guys got it. Um, there seems to be a really, um, something about transparency, um, something about accountability, something about being lied to, something about, um, you know, understanding what's going on within the city. And so, I thought that that video was really telling. Uh, what it is, is, um, for those of you who haven't taken the time to watch it, it's the first of what's planned to be a three-part series, and it's called Corrigan Lies. And, uh, it's specifically about the police chief and how he has absolutely no issue with, uh, just blatantly lying, uh, in press conferences specifically, uh, when it comes, especially when it comes to talking about homicides that his officers are involved in. Um, so I did release that first video. Anybody who wants to look at it, it's on YouTube. Uh, my name is Brian Ellison on there, and you can find it. Uh, but I think if you watch that and you watch, uh, the police chief's own words, I think it's pretty telling, and I think you can understand why some people might have a question about why, whether or not there actually is any transparency and if people are being held accountable. So I'd encourage everybody to, uh, check that out if they haven't already. Um, and then, I guess the, the last thing I'd like to say is just, uh, when it, with regards to this water bill thing, obviously this whole thing is ridiculous. And so, I would just like to, um, check and see if it's possible, clarify, make sure that Corrigan O'Donoghue was not reading meters.
All right, who's next? Mr. Wolf, I can't really see your hand behind the podium. I assume it's up? Okay, you're next, Mr. Wolf.
333 North Troy Street. Uh, I know most of you have a college education, but I can begin to think that all of you majored in acting. Acting that you're concerned about the people that come here before you. You give them a lousy three minutes. They used to give them five minutes. You think at this time, with all, with the heartache I'm hearing, that you would allow people to speak for 10 minutes and express the problems that they're having? No. Mr. Johnson has been the manager of this city much too long. I can't understand how a commission can, can tolerate what has happened in the past few years under the, under the, with the permission and the encouragement and possibly even the initiation of these issues by Mr. Johnson. Who's going to fire him? Let's look at the, uh, city charter. It takes a vote of the commission to fire him. But you know who hired him? Former Mayor Ellison. You also know who groomed present Mayor Fournier to be mayor. It was Mayor Ellison. And I just can't understand this mafioso type of attitude that's taken by the majority of this commission against residents. This is atrocious to joke to seniors and Royal Oak Manor and say they're useless, that they don't get, deserve any more respect than anyone else, even though they may be handicapped and on a fixed income. You got people dying of cancer that have to pay thousands of dollars for sidewalks they never, never asked for. Whose, whose bad ideas were this? I don't understand why the people in this community can't rise up and say something about it. When Vincenter came before you, they were well organized, but even they had to put up with the lot splitting. And now today, you have to put up with cookie cutter homes, one after the other? You could've had single-family residential homes allowed, like they do in West Bloomfield and most of the Bloomfields, where you have large trees on every property. That you could've done. But no. Now you have another added strain on the sewer system, which none of you have addressed. Even Burt City of Birmingham has addressed their sewers. This city refuses to, to address it, except in pipe dreams about, uh, what you call it? I forget the na, the term of it. Veils, whatever you call it. Absolutely ridiculous. You, I've never seen such poor planning before. I say, get rid of the city manager, number one, and I would ask, and you know what? Maybe we ought to put on the next election ballot whether or not you approve of the city ma, whether or not you approve that the city manager continues job or not. I would like to see-
Mr. Wolf, I need you to finish your thought.
-the response on that. Yeah, I know, three minutes. And thank you for giving me a couple of minutes. You know I'm really pissed off about this.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. All right, who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Cory Farrell. I live at 1415 Huron. We're back to the Mark Twain subject again. I have a few questions for you to just think about right now. How far away is your neighborhood park from your home, where you live right now? Do you use that park? Would you be okay with 186 apartments being built right at the end of your street in your only free neighborhood green space? Would you want any input or notification about such a project happening due to rezoning right at the end of your street, Huron ends, right in that space? That's why I'm here tonight. My heart is grieving, along with many of my neighbors' hearts. We have lost the only free community green space in the neighborhood. We knew this day would come. We had organized previously to try to preserve as much of the woods as possible. We had hoped for single-family homes with yards, a church, or perhaps a senior living space, since it would have nice proximity to the grocery store. In fact, the last plan most of the neighborhood knew was for 55 detached condos with yards and a park space with some woods preservation, i.e., enhancing our neighborhood. Imagine our shock and horror when they started chopping down the woods with the for sale sign still up. Imagine our shock at learning this property was rezoned in 2014. Imagine our sadness at realizing we will now have no free community green space in the neighborhood. I purchased my home 30 years ago because there was an elementary school at the end of my street. That's gone. I purchased my home because there was a free city park at the end of my street. That's gone. It's now a dog park. I can pay to use it. I purchased my home because there was a free woods and trees at the end of my street. They are gone, except for thankfully that little piece behind the dog park that is still there, but I can't use it unless I pay. Nobody in city government seems concerned about this. Nobody cares about the negative changes to our neighborhood, the increased air pollution, decreased air quality, noise pollution, displaced woodland animals that are gonna be looking for winter homes in our garages, our houses, our yards, a potential increase in flooding, definite increase in traffic. Your city commission predecessors were in such a hurry to approve this rezoning in 2014, they didn't even order a traffic study. It is on video that they didn't think it was necessary. They estimated 1,000 to 1,200 new vehicle trips per day on Campbell Road. That seems very low if you stop and think how many times you went in and out of your own driveway yesterday on Sunday. The neighbors are upset for many reasons. My property value and quality of life will not be enhanced by this development. I was always proud to claim Royal Oak as my hometown these past 30 years. Not so much anymore. I realize many of you on the city commission are not the ones that approved that rezoning. I, I get that, um, but you really need to be mindful. I'm imploring you tonight to really be mindful of the people that are already here, that voted you in, that really need you to do your job, that your predecessors wimped out on, for lack of a better term.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell.
I, I have one solution.
Finish your thought.
One solution. I'm thinking now about Exchange Park, which is seven streets away from my house. I, if I had kids, they couldn't walk that far. But that park needs a lot of work. If you're serious about helping those of us in the northeast corner, dump some money into that park. Put in a woodland trail around it. It's a large space. Fill in the bad spots.
Thank you.
Plant some of your trees there so I can walk there and enjoy it, instead of sinking in the swampy land that's there.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell.
No, thank you.
Who's next? I see a hand in the back corner.
Aye.
Aye.
Anne Gardner, 4502 Briarwood. I'm here representing the friends of Mark Twain Dog Park. We are not associated with Pat and Jack Wall, the petition they were circulating at the polls last Tuesday, or the protests they've organized at the Mark Twain property. We were very upset that Channel 7 Action News implied by their graphics during the story they ran on the protesters and pictures inside the dog park, that the protesters somehow represented the dog park and the park was in danger. I personally contacted Bethany Moore, the reporter on the story, and made sure she knew the protesters did not represent the dog park. The woods were never gonna be torn down and, uh, that the park itself was never in danger. In fact, those woods were always a part of the dog park. Channel 7, then on their Wednesday 5 o'clock newscast while covering the protest, did correctly state, "The dog park is safe." We are saddened and dismayed that this group is targeting Gleason Developers, especially since Gleason donated 60 yards of wood chips with the promise of more to cover our walking paths in the woods, which volunteers did on Saturday morning two weeks ago, spread on our walking paths. And you can clearly see those walking paths and what a great job the volunteers did if you watch those Channel 7 reports, because they were back there. So not only did Gleason offer more wood chips, but offered even more fencing than required to keep our dogs safe and out of the construction zone. I, too, enjoyed those woods. I was sad to see them torn down. I walked those woods every day with my dogs for over four years, but they were never intended to be a park, never intended to be a nature center, and never a part of Mark Twain Dog Park. Within a few miles of Mark Twain, there are three nature centers. There are numerous parks, 53 in Royal Oak altogether, and green spaces, including that what will be the largest park in Royal Oak, Normandy Oaks, which will include a walking path. But there is only one enclosed dog park. On behalf of the friends of Mark Twain Dog Park, I'd like to thank the mayor, the city commission, Parks and Rec, and Gleason Developers for their continued support and allowing us to be not part of the problem, but part of the solution. Thank you.
Ms. Gardner?
Holly Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard. On June 25th, the commission declined to act on petitions to pave Mount Vernon, Washington, and Custer. We thank the commission for agreeing with the majority of owners. As Mayor Fournier said, "It is a special place, a unique neighborhood." He further noted that the master plan prioritizes the sanctity and preservation of neighborhoods. Commissioner Dubach, in the 25th June video, you can see it starting at around 2:06, recommended, quote, "Looking into the maintenance of the road to make sure we're doing a decent job." Several commissioners agreed, so Mayor Fournier asked Mr. Johnson to look into maintenance options, so the commission can, quote, "Engage in a productive dialogue with our friends on Mount Vernon." The resulting memo from Mr. Russ, uh, from Mr. Russell and Mr. Callahan, approved by Mr. Johnson, it's item I-3 on the consent agenda, presents no such material. The memo repeats the argument for paving. The memo does not respond to the commission's request for maintenance options. The memo updates the June 25 maintenance cost from 5K estimate from Mr. Callahan from 5K to 8.2K, but that's still well under $10,000 a year. A letter from Holly Donoghue that I have dated May 21st of this year estimates the city's cost, nothing about the residents, just the city's cost for paving the entire area, at $1,048,285. At 10K a year, that would cover over 100 years of maintenance. I must specifically address the memo statement that road millage money cannot be used for regular maintenance of our roads because it's intended for long-term repairs and improvements. This narrow interpretation of the millage is not justified. Proper improvement of the road bed would be a long-term improvement, and it would be significantly less costly to the city than paving. And seriously, all of us are paying into this millage. The city really probably could use a modest proportion of that money, maybe it would take 50K, uh, to stabilize our road now, so that the long-term routine maintenance is, is all that's needed. Today, I spoke with a salesperson at Midwest Industries, a Canton, Ohio company I found online that specializes in alternatives to paving, to ask about getting a consultation. And she's gonna send me information on maintenance options and costs. The company does work out of Ecourse as well as Canton. We really are looking for road improvements, but ones that will not destroy the sanctity and uniqueness of our neighborhood. That's all I have to say on that, and I'm gonna ask your indulgence to let me go over just a little bit to talk about some factual materials from the, uh, June, June 25th meeting that might help you out, um, inform you.
Real quick. So, moved by Commissioner Macy. Support? Support by Commissioner Lassiter. All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Those close? Okay.
This'll take 30-
Dr. Anderson, you have a couple more minutes.
30 seconds. I don't even need that. Lexington was actually paved in 1969. Um, it was paved because Royal Oak High School needed to have it paved and they needed to have access. What, what people were thinking about in 1990, early 1990s, was when the, um, eastbound lane of Lexington was closed. Uh, and that was done at the behest of the neighborhood because, uh, the high school hot riders, hot, hot rodders were buzzing through really, really fast, and it was pretty dangerous. And we used to have our, uh, yard regularly ripped up by guys deciding that they wanted to run their cars through our yard, back and front yards. Hasn't happened since that got closed. Hasn't happened since that got closed, but that was what the actual timeline was. I just wanted to clarify that for you. But Lexington is what it is after 49 years, which is part of the concern about paving and taking out trees now. It'd be 49 years before it would look like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Anybody else here to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
My name's Brian Walzki. I'm with the Royal Oak Ottawa Block Club. I reside at 1421 Ottawa. I'm going to try to go through some of the comments that were given and remarks made at our recent block meeting this past Thursday. These are some of the concerns and comments. We would like to confirm clean and uncontaminated dirt brought in the residential development. We would like to see an increase in notification of future developments. From what we understand, there were only 31 residents notified of the new proposed development. We canvassed a few residents that were supposedly in that group, and two of the four didn't remember receiving postcards. The notification that went out listed that the address was 45, 4590?
4590.
4590, North Campbell. And I believe the actual school address was 4600 North Campbell. There was a concern about the back-to-back rezon and site plan approval. There was no time to consider what was being proposed. Rental units are not considered investment-like homes which demonstrate commitment to the city. There's storm drain concerns. We understand that we live in a high-water table, and there's still possibility that we will have some concerns with the drains. We would like to be a witness when basements are dug. We would like also that the development require backup system in addition to electric We have a concern with traffic, and we'd like to know if there was a traffic study ever completed. Was Madison Heights ever notified of the development? And also the increased traffic development. City commission agenda should be published in the Royal Oak Review for increased transparency. With regard to the development, again, we suggest that they provide a 24-hour maintenance service available for the renters of the property. We also would like to make certain that the dumpsters are hidden from view. And will any of the units be available or targeted for senior citizens? We would like to share the woods with the dog park in provision so all residents have access.
Sir, I do need you to finish your final thoughts.
Excuse me?
I do need you to finish your final thoughts, sir.
Dave, he's the one they gave their time to.
Are you the person that they gave their time to? Okay, we'll give you another three minutes, I guess.
We also like to make certain that developers using the highest quality material used for the development and the structures primarily be built with brick. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Anybody here to speak tonight? Anybody else that hasn't already spoken? Okay, we're gonna...
Here's one.
Didn't you first to kick it off, ma'am? Ms. Wall?
Let me? She was kind of intro-.
You're doing the intro? Okay, I'll let you have your public comment since you're doing the intro. We're going way out of, I'm breaking the rules for you, ma'am.
Okay, I have something I'd like to pass around here. This is, relates to a study in 1996 identifying the I-75 corridor, the worst area for pollution, sight, sound, and particulates. Also, the aerial picture that included at that time the woods behind Mark Twain's school, which was 2/3 of what's pictured here. And those 2/3 of the trees are what all those wood chips are. How kind was that to get rid of something you got to get rid of anyway? But I'm positive, I'm really positive. I don't think that we're at the end of our rope here. I think there's other things to address to make this development the best it can be. I'm really glad to say that Manny, Kai, and Nikki, the developer, called, and he's willing to meet with the residents at a meeting, again, at Prince of Glory Lutheran Church, which is just east of the Value Center Market and the strip mall, on Monday, the 20th of this month, August, at 7:00 PM. So we're really excited about that, and I hope we can also have the contractor there. It's either Kevin or Keith. He was very nice and came out to talk to us at the protest march we had on Wednesday. I'd like to read something that really ministered to me when I was grieving for the woods. And I'll tell you, I never saw a group facing the commission with so much grief that I did tonight. It was hard to listen to the mom, the grandma, I think it was, that is living with the grief of a loss of her daughter and raising her grandson, the grief over what happened with the woman who had a lot of medical bills and now has to pay for her sidewalk repair, not to mention all us grieving over the loss of the woods. And I'm sure you've got to feel that, too. But I do believe there's a light at the end of the tunnel. Hope begins in the dark, the stubborn hope that if you just show up and try to do the right thing, the dawn will come. You wait and watch and work, and you don't give up. So there are other things to address, and it's not just, the trees are gone, we're going to grieve. You know, they say, "Don't cry over spilt milk." Well, you can go milk the cow again, right? Can I have some smiles, anyway? Okay. But you can't, you know, bring the trees back. So we are grieving, and when we were at the Mark Twain table there at the polling place, there were so many stories and so many tears and a lot of swear words, too, I got to tell you, that I'm not used to hearing at all. So people are really, really upset, and you've got to know that. And you had to know years ago, every time that you proposed some development, you had a lot of people here addressing it. There were a lot of people, all of those people in that one square mile area, maybe it's not quite, maybe it's a little less than that, but everyone was concerned. And we don't believe that it was a mistake that it was done this way. You said, you know, you talked about the steps that were taken.
Ms. Wall, I do need you to finish your final thought, ma'am.
You were talking about the steps that were taken, but we know that you know how we felt about the woods and our hope for the woods. And the one main thing, I'll tell you, that most people believed on that day at the polls was, didn't the city say they would save a buffer of trees, at least a buffer 10-deep egress or whatever you call it, so you would have that against the freeway?
Ms. Wall, I really do need you to finish up.
So I hope you may come to that meeting on the 10th also.
20th, right? Not the 10th?
Correct. You're right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell.
A little nerve-wracking up here.
Don't be nervous. All right. Is there anybody else here to speak tonight at public comment? Going once? Going twice?
Question, question. Do I understand, is it still a rule that after you speak once, you can speak again when everyone's?
Well, it's a chair's privilege, but we have some business to get to tonight, so I think we, if nobody else is here to speak at public comment that hasn't already spoken, I think we're going to bring the meeting back up to here, so, all right. We're going to close public comment, bring the meeting back up to here, which brings us to item number six, the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Douglas.
Motion of approval of the agenda?
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, support by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? Commissioner Gibbs?
I would be interested in pulling I-3 off for the discussion about the Mark Twain, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Mount Vernon?
Mount Vernon, yes.
Well, when we get to the consent agenda, we can do that. So we can pull anything off the consent agenda at that time.
Okay.
So we'll do that. I won't forget. Commissioner Levasseur?
I have a couple amendments I'd like to add to the agenda. Number one, I'd like to put on the agenda a discussion of high-water bills and what action, if any, we should be taking with regard to that. That would be my first motion. I suppose I should do this as two separate motions?
Yeah, it might be easier.
Would you rather I wait on that second motion till we address this one?
Let's do the first motion, then, so it doesn't get mixed in case there's... So we got support by Commissioner Dubbuck. This is a motion to add a discussion on water bills to the agenda, an amendment to the agenda approved as is, just to make things complicated. Okay. Discussion? Commissioner Macy?
I'm also interested in talking about this issue and adding it to the agenda, and I thought about doing that tonight as well. I do have some questions. If we're going to be talking about this, I think it's a larger policy issue of how the city is going to deal with these high-water bills when they come in. And I have some data I'd like to get, and I sent an email, but there hasn't been time before this meeting to get that information, so I wondered if you would be interested in talking about this at the next agenda meeting so I could get some...
I think what I want to do is have a discussion, then we can give staff direction. That's what I'm looking for.
Oh, yeah.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the amendment passes. So this amendment is part of the original motion, which we haven't voted on yet, which is to approve the agenda. Okay. Discuss. I got to go in detail, or I'm going to forget. Okay. Commissioner Levasseur, you had a second amendment.
The second one has to do with the time to act on a planned urban development when that's approved by the planning commission and the city commission, and just, I want to have some discussion on that as well.
Okay. Are you talking about the notification requirements when anything comes before planning?
I'm talking more in terms of that planned urban development project was approved many years ago and is just now moving forward now, and whether there's a sunset on something like that.
So you want to add amendment to the agenda that is for a discussion on the timing specifically to this project, but also in general related to notifications regarding planned unit developments and things of that nature?
It's more general, it's about, it's mayor policy, but it is definitely something that's broad-bought by the discussion here today.
Okay, so you want to understand, you have questions about the policy that the city commission employs when it comes to these matters, the ordinance? Questions about the ordinance?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so there's amendment to understand the ordinance better as it relates to notification, as it relates to projects. Is there support for that amendment?
A second.
Okay, we have a support by Commissioner Gibbs. Is there discussion? Mayor Prof. Douglas?
First of all, is Mr. Twing still here? You do something like that, and you just sit and wait for a door to open.
I thought I saw him walk in after.
He was here earlier, but...
He's still hiding back there.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Twing is still here. Okay.
So I guess I have a reluctance to, still commenting, a reluctance to do commissioner education here at the table as a matter of an agenda item. I think Commissioner Levasseur has the opportunity to get information himself from the staff, and I guess I'd rather see, rather us getting an education here at the table, a motion like this have a little bit more direction and focus, so I will not be supporting the motion.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Levasseur?
Yeah, just to be clear, it's not so much about education, and it's one of these things where I don't want to really dig into the issue until it's actually on the agenda, but it's really about the policy decisions of this body when it comes to a planned urban development like this, when there is a change to our zoning, and whether we're just going to leave it out there for proposed development. It's going to be three years, five years, 20 years before they actually have to break ground, and that's an issue that I believe we as a body should be talking about.
Commissioner Perusch?
I think the language of the zoning ordinance in terms of notification of the planned unit development that occurred in 2014, 2015, has been in place for a long time. I think the, and perhaps I'm getting into the substance of the discussion that might transpire after this, if it actually gets added to the agenda, but I think part of the frustration is the surprise on everyone's part, including ours, including the staff's, that the development started when it did. And I think the problem, it's not a problem, it's just that, once you have a site plan that's approved, unless it's changed, it stays in place. It's not, to my knowledge, it's not grandfathered and doesn't have a life that ends at some point, as long as it's still a viable site plan. And then it's the private developer, the private property owner's decision as to when they roll in the bulldozer.
Point of order, I do think we're getting into the discussion of the subject matter.
Yeah, you probably are. But that probably explains why I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Dubbuck?
I'll support the conversation because there's folks here, you know, interested in the issue tonight, but I would prefer that there was some policy concept that we were actually discussing. I think if there's something to be fixed, we should discuss fixing it, but a fact-finding mission at the table and staff is not prepared is not that productive, but if Commissioner Levasseur wants to have the conversation, I'll support.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I have hesitation, but I'll support the conversation, just because I'm not as prepared. We had similar questions, but I think it's fair to give staff a little bit of a heads-up so they can pull the facts together, but, you know, as long as it's a conversation, we hold ourselves honest to, you know, give a chance to staff to go back and follow up and ask questions and not get into a fact-finding mission, you know, at the table. I'll be supportive of it, so.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No, no.
Okay, the motion passes, the amendment passes, so we now have two amendments to the first motion of approving the agenda. Any discussion now on the amended amended agenda? None? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we have an agenda. This brings us to the consent agenda. Commissioner Gibbs had referenced earlier that she would like item I dot triple I pulled off for discussion. Are there any other topics on the consent agenda that anyone wishes to pull off? Commissioner Levasseur?
It would be item seven, let's see if I can find it now, 7F, on the traffic signal inventory.
7F. Okay. All right, so that leaves us a consent agenda with the city commission meeting minutes from July 23, 2018, claims July 31, August 3, August 14, approval of purchase orders, third amendment of the conditional rezoning agreement for 3425 Star Road, award of contract CAP 1846, street tree planting program, contract modification CAP 1801, 2018 concrete pavement replacement and prepaid sidewalk improvements, contract modification to B 1302 for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning for the public library, and receive and file the non-action items, which consist of the July 2018 investment report, auditor's engagement letter for fiscal year and June 30, 2018. Is there a motion for that consent agenda? Give a motion by Commissioner Macy, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to, we'll do it in order of consent agenda, so that would be 7F. Commissioner Levasseur?
I believe, there may have been reference, I didn't see it in the materials, but that there was an RFP for this project before the recommendation to award this contract. Mr. Callahan, are you able to give us some clarification on whether there was, this mayor was put out to bids or whether there was requests for proposals or qualifications?
This was not bid out. This is one of our consultants that's already vetted through the QBS process. They approached us and have been working with us on different traffic signal projects and indicated that they would be willing to assist us with the grant application that we were asking for, and along with that, they indicated that we should be working on our GIS project, which has been in our capital plan for a while. So they gave us a proposal.
Okay, my concerns here, and basically, the way I read this proposal is that we're to spend $225 per traffic signal to take a few photos and put a little data into a database, and that seemed extreme to me, and that's why I'm concerned that we didn't... that seemed extreme to me, and that's why I'm concerned that we didn't seek bids on this before making this recommendation.
Okay.
Any other discussion or comments? Is there a motion? Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yeah, it's a contract for $7,800 that should yield actual new revenue if we were to go and seek grants with this information with an existing partner that the department has a relationship with. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, they're already under contract with us to provide consulting engineering.
It's a time and cost and expense to create an RFP for your staff to go and then vet an RFP for a $7,000 contract. I would assume it's not a best practice?
It would take us quite a bit of effort to write this RFP, you know?
I'll move forward.
Better part of a couple days.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dubbuck, is there support? Supported by Commissioner Macy? Discussion? Commissioner Lavassar?
Whether the end result is appropriate or not, and it very well may be something that would be valuable in seeking grants, that still means that, that still, that doesn't excuse us from trying to get the best, the best deal we can from a prospective service provider. I can't support it in the way it's been done. $225 per traffic signal seems quite extreme for me for what service is being provided to us.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Macy?
So I'm going to expand on traffic signals, but I'm just going to, I'm just going to read from this report, if that's okay, about what is going to be done. Photographs from each cardinal direction, photographs of the cabinets, documentation of the type of controller, its agent capabilities, type of cabinet, vehicle and pedestrian actuation, number of signals, type of lighting, type of pedestrian crossing signals, the signal timing, cabinet wiring, and as-built plans located within each cabinet, if available, be scanned and stored, and a new GIS data set created specifically for the signal information. So just to clarify, it's not in fact just a few photographs.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Good luck, Mr. Callahan. Go after those grants for us. Bring some well-hard-earned tax money back to the city of Royal Oak, sir. All right. That brings us to item number I dot three, or I dot triple I, gravel road maintenance. Commissioner Gibbs?
When I was reading through the agenda and read through this particular item, I remembered having a discussion here and it being one of the suggestions for staff to follow, that we do some kind of current maintenance, and there's nothing provided here from staff saying, how do we maintain the dirt roads as usable dirt roads? And it's kind of a concern. I, I'm not saying that staff didn't follow instructions, but their opinion here was very clear, we think it should be paved, and that's not following our request.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
I agree, actually. I thought that our, in the wake of that conversation, our direction that we should probably invest more in maintaining that road was pretty clear, and this seems to be the answer from staff is no, we're not going to do that. Am I misreading it?
Well, I'll apologize if that's how it's being interpreted, but the point was that maybe we weren't clear about what we are doing right now, which is, thank you, is grading and chloride, and chloride is about the only thing we're allowed to put on it anymore. In the old days, we used to use road oil.
Right.
And frankly, oil was a very effective product at stabilizing roads. Unfortunately, it was also effective at contaminating the water table, so it's not allowed to be used anymore.
So I guess there's no real reference in here to like, can we more frequently do what we are allowed to do?
We could do that more frequently, certainly.
That would be, that would be, I think, preferable.
The problem is, is it's still not very effective. The chloride is, has a very short period of effectiveness in reducing dust, and really does nothing as far as long-term stability of the road.
And how many times are we doing it a year right now?
He left.
Two to three, according to this report, but...
So if we were to double that, I think, I mean, at least then we're putting in the effort and doing what we said we were going to do, residents might see that even if we double the maintenance, it's still a terrible road to drive on, and maybe then they need to have another conversation about whether or not they want to pave it. But certainly, if we're willing to spend more than a million to pave it, we should be willing to spend within tens of thousands to, if that's even what it's going to be, to...
We can do that.
Double the maintenance. That seems reasonable, and I think you're right. Like, I said it when we, when we voted not to pave this road, I would think there'd probably be a quality-of-life improvement in paving that road, but residents don't want it. We're not going to force it on them. We're not going to spend this money if you don't want us to, so let's expedite the maintenance, so...
The other thing that Matt really tried to emphasize is that the real problem with gravel roads is when you can't keep them dry. If you can build them up, crown them nicely, and have drainage ditches along the side of them and can keep them dry, they'll last a lot longer, but there's no room to do that. We can't put in ditches without taking out the trees, and nobody wants to take out the trees. We can't build it up because it would end up creating a problem for people's yards.
So I'll take a stab at this as well. I think, I appreciate Commissioner Dubbuck actually getting straight to the point, because I walked away the last meeting with the understanding that, okay, both the residents and this commission agreed, look, we're not going to pave it, it doesn't make sense, the residents don't want it, we went through that, and that we were going to work on a plan to, you know, put some ideas forward to improve the maintenance. We fully understand now and understand that, you know, there's obviously things we can't do, you know, that are bad for the environment, that are bad, you know, you don't want to take trees out, you don't want to impact the water table, but I have to say, coming back with a answer that says, well, we can, we still think paving's the best option, thank you very much. I won't say I'm disappointed, I try not to use that word, you know, freely, but I hope one of the commissioners here will take a little action here to make sure that we put an effort in, and I think the residents on Mount Vernon will know that we're putting at least a good effort into it, and they will understand the limitations, and they will understand the trade-offs. You know, it's not, it's still a dirt road, it's still going to be problems, we can make it better, but we're not going to take away all the problems a dirt road has. But if we put in a good old college effort here in a legitimate attempt to do a little bit better on the road, and, you know, it's still a problem, the residents will come to us, if it's satisfactory to them who have to drive on it every day, then okay, you know, that's good. You know, they can be rest assured and, you know, the dust will settle on it. Sorry for the pun. Oh, I know, I'm allowed to talk too. I'm, I'll...
Commissioner Lavassar?
Mr. Johnson, do you need a motion from here to send this back to engineering to follow?
If the commission would like a specific solution such as doubling the amount of grading and chloriding, the motion would be appropriate, and we'll just move ahead with it.
I would like, I would move that staff provide us with recommendations that don't include paving Mount Vernon here, whether that be doubling the maintenance or something else. Give us some, you know, if it's a matter of making lemonade here, because they believe this is lemons, make lemonade. Tell us what we need to do.
Motion by Commissioner Lavassar.
I'll second that.
Supported by Commissioner Dubbuck. I think he had his hand up first. Discussion? Mr. Macy?
So I guess it's kind of on that. So I had the same kind of questions. First of all, and I said here that the report says that it gets graded two to three times a year. My impression when everyone was here was that they hadn't seen it graded in a really long time, so I was, I was a little bit skeptical of that claim that it was in fact two to three times a year even now, because people seem to claim they hadn't remembered it being done in several years. And then also, another, I think, solution that is maybe brushed off fairly quickly here is about the drainage ditches and the swales, that that would cost money. Again, it's pointed out that to pave the road would cost the city millions of dollars, and I think putting in some drainage ditches and swales, I understand that there are trees that need to be respected and that we don't want to go through, but that, I mean, there could be a swale and then a tree, and then a swale and then a tree. So just another thing that I'd like to see a little bit more attention paid to, rather than kind of easily dismissed.
Commissioner Douglas?
So under, we've talked about the dust control. Under what circumstances does the road need to be graded? I mean, and I'll hypothesize that you'll grade it in the spring, you know, after the spring rains, and maybe you'll grade it in the fall, but do you need to grade it twice in the summer? I mean, maybe three times grading is enough, but we need to recommend more dust control.
Yeah. But I think that's what the motion on the table is, come back with something better than just say we stand by our opinion to pave it. Yeah, what are those trade-offs? Fair, fair, not argument, but question.
The need for grading can vary considerably from year to year, depending on weather, depending on other conditions. Basically, when you start getting holes that are a problem, you need to grade it.
So I, I'm just not sure that asking staff for recommendations will get us what we want, and I'm not sure I know a better solution, but still, I mean, if staff eyeballs it or waits until somebody calls and says, you know, we've got a lot of holes, please come out and grade it, I mean, a responsive solution seems like the best approach, rather than, I mean, if we ask them for recommendations, they're going to come back and say, well, we'll grade it when it needs it.
And then we'll grade staff?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm not seeing an idea, asking staff for recommendations doesn't seem like a productive approach, but dictating to them doesn't seem like it either, and I'm just kind of flummoxed here.
Commissioner Perush?
Having lived on a gravel road a long time ago, for a long period of time, Commissioner Douglas is correct when she asserts that road condition, and Mr. Johnson as well, road conditions vary significantly from year to year. If you have a really rainy spring like we have this year, you can grade it every week, and it'll still be a mess the next week, because those heavy rains just wash out the dirt and the stones. There's nothing there to hold it in place. On other years where it's drier, it stays compacted and it gets hard-caked, especially since in a lot of those areas, it's a clay soil, and you don't develop the potholes that you usually do. So the problem is, is that you can't predict the weather, and so you can't really predict or put in place a regular maintenance schedule until you know what the weather is going to be. It's like the snow plowing thing. We can never predict accurately how much manpower and salt and hours we're going to be using, plowing snow or salting ice, because the weather conditions vary from year to year. We just have to make a ballpark guess. And the same is true here. You know, if we were to say, okay, we want you to grade that road four, five times a year, you might have a year when you're not going to need that many, and then you're going to have a year when you could use twice that many, and the road's still going to be a mess. So unfortunately, that's just the nature of a gravel road, especially with the type of soil and road conditions that we've got, and as Mr. Johnson says, the terrible drainage. There aren't, the road that I was on for a long period of time had ditches and swales alongside so that the water didn't stay on the road. In this particular situation, having driven down Mount Vernon on a couple of occasions after rain, you've got these huge puddles because the rain doesn't drain off to the sides, and that, the more rain there is, and the cars go over it, it kicks up the dirt and the stones, and the more potholes develop. So, I mean, we can, we can say, oh, yeah, we'd like you to double the amount of time or the amount of times that you go out there and grade, but my guess is that, given the right weather conditions in April and May, you're still going to have a mess and you're still going to have people complaining. I'm just saying that, having lived with that situation for years and years, it's, it's, you know, gravel roads are messy, and there's not a whole lot you can do about them. That's just the way I feel.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yeah, I guess it was my understanding that the motion was, is it just to come back with recommendations or a maintenance plan? I feel like we would first ask for recommendations, the recommendation was, it should be paved. What we want is a plan, and I understand that they can't provide absolute specifics, but at least tell us, you know, that we're willing to spend more, that we're going to make more visits, that it'll be monitored, that it'll be visited on a, you know, every other month to take a look to see if it needs to be some, one of these treatments.
Right.
It would just be, you know, nice to know, and for the residents to know that we are, you know, taking action to better maintain it, so that's, I supported the motion because I'm open to see not just more stuff for us to ponder, but staff actually have a perspective on how we can do what we're directing them to do. Yeah, I think for me, when I look at it, I didn't, I don't understand it as saying, do this or come up with, you know, a whole lot of recommendations, rather, let's monitor it, let's keep an idea, let's go out there, let's do what we can do, see what it looks like, report back to the commission after the season or two, and say, hey, look, you know what, we did this for a year or two, and this is the things we had to do within the capability of doing, and if there's a significant investment that needs to be made, well, we can, they can bring it back to this table as well, but I think just staying on top of it and making sure that we pay a little extra attention to it, given its need, being a gravel road, you know, would be, I don't want to say satisfactory, but a step in the right direction, because, you know, like Commissioner Perush said, weather is so variable. You can't necessarily commit to a schedule, but you can commit to keeping an eye on it and then doing what's within our power, so maybe that's a recommendation. Commissioner Perush?
Sorry, I have one more question. Are we applying this, this recommendation and this policy to all gravel roads or just Mount Vernon? Because there are more than just one. There's, I don't know how many miles of gravel roads there are in the community.
2.1, I think, left? 2.1 miles, I think, left, right?
2.1 miles?
That's what I read, what I remember.
That's a little bit more than just Mount Vernon. A lot of them are side streets, clearly, but not necessarily all of them, so I guess that's a question for the people who are making this motion.
Well, I was focused very specifically on Mount Vernon at this time, and I suspect that the recommendations that come forward on Mount Vernon may become appropriate when we're looking at some of those other streets as well, but very specifically, Mount Vernon is what came to be something in our attention.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, I'm going to call for the vote.
So what's the motion again?
The motion is to have staff go back and look at maintenance solutions, potential maintenance solutions for Mount Vernon, for the gravel road, other than we think it should be paved, which we agree that is a solution, but I think we were clear that that wasn't going to happen, at least at this point, until the neighbors decide if they ever want it done. Commissioner Douglas?
I just feel like this is micromanagement. I mean, it's, it's a good idea, I just don't think that this is a level of detail that we should be dictating here at the table, so, I mean, not because I'm, I hate Mount Vernon Boulevard, but because of, but for procedural reasons, I'm not going to support this motion.
Commissioner Lavassar?
The way I worded the motion was specifically to avoid micromanaging. I didn't say, go do this, go do that, grade it, you know, 15 times a month or whatever. We're looking for solutions, we're looking for staff to give us those solutions. We're not satisfied with simply saying, the solution is to pave. We want other options, other choices, we want staff to provide us those. That's not micromanaging, that's giving direction for what we consider to be the concerns, and we're looking for feedback on how to address those concerns.
Yeah. I'll just add that Mount Vernon came up here as a specific agenda item to pave. The neighbors and the commission decided not to pave that road, but we also said we have to look at some maintenance issues if we're not going to pave it, specific to that dialogue related to Mount Vernon, so I'll support it.
Any other discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Okay. Where are we on the agenda? That takes care of the consent agenda. So that brings us to item number eight, which is the Civic Center Project Update Report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Commission. We're about 15% through the Civic Center project right now. Obviously, the parking structure has broken ground, and we are looking at commencing the groundbreaking of the City Hall and the Police Department, the new police station sometime in the fourth quarter of this year. As such, we thought it was prudent to bring two of our consultants to the table to provide an update to the public. Our first will be Franco, our public relations firm, to discuss their public engagement work and their work with the deployment of the Rethink Royal Oak brand. Second, we'll bring our owners rep to the table, Plant Moran Cressa. They'll provide an update on the new buildings and when we're going to be breaking ground on them, the budget and the green initiatives the city is incorporating, so I'll defer to the Franco team right now, unless you have any questions of me.
You have any questions for Mr. Fenton at this point? Okay. All right.
Hi, good evening. I'm Elizabeth Robin Sabrin from Franco. I believe you have in your packets, we put together a project activity report that kind your packets, we put together a project activity report that kind of gives a summary of some of the things that we've been working on since we came on board at the March Commission meeting, and wanted to highlight, wanted to highlight some of those things, the way we've approached the project, and then can certainly answer any questions that anybody has. So, the approach that we took after hearing from Todd and Judy and the farmers' market and the Chamber of Commerce was that there was a lot of confusion around the project. So, one of the first things that we did was wanted to build the brand around the construction project. There are a number of other projects going on in the city, and we thought that it would make more sense to brand this project so people would understand which project it was, what was happening with it. We could give specific updates about the project in a clear and concise manner, and avoid some of that confusion. So, you have probably seen around the Rethink Royal Oak messaging that we put together. This was designed to take into the consideration the nature of the project. The, you know, we're bringing in a lot of new parking spaces as part of the project and getting people to think about how they're going to use the city when they're downtown. You know, is it to pull right up to the front of the business, get in and out, or are they going to park somewhere, stay for a couple hours for free, you know, do their business, eat, you know, shop, whatever they're going to do, and then get back in their car? So, are they going to bike there? Are they going to walk there? So, really just trying to think about the multiple ways that people are engaging with the city, and that was one of the reasons that we came up with the Rethink Royal Oak. And getting people, you know, it's hard to do something new, and, you know, they do have to think differently about how they're going to use the city. So, we, as a team, and working with Todd and Judy and Don, developed messaging behind the brand. We put together a website, the logo, marketing materials, and all of the city employees now have the Rethink Royal Oak logo and website on their email signature. So, whenever somebody gets an email from them, they're able to click on the link and get instant information about what's happening with the project. We also spent a lot of time researching the parking, the current parking situation in the city. So, where were the parking structures, where were the surface lots, how much did they cost, how long could you park there, how many spaces were available, and I'll make sure everybody gets the Parking Guide, which you can also download at rethinkroyaloke.com. But we spent a lot of time putting all this information together, so it would be at a glance for the public to use, so they understood where to park, and then for business owners to be able to give out to their customers to say, "Hey, here's where my store is, here's where you can go, here's where you can park." And we thought that it would be useful to have that all in one place, which we've gotten a lot of positive feedback about that. We've also supported businesses by putting together a Dropbox site for them, so they can download collateral materials, they can get the Parking Guide, they can get signage, we've made table tents for restaurants, all kinds of information, they can get social media graphics and copy to use on their pages to distribute information, and whatever else they want, we're happy to add that. The other thing that we spent time on was gathering benchmark data. That was part of the initial RFP for us, was to get information from business owners, visitors, residents, city employees about how they used the current parking, how it would affect them, and what questions they had. So, we spent a lot of time surveying people, surveying parking vendors, getting information about those groups, and meeting with a lot of the different groups, the Royal Oak Restaurant Association, the Chamber of Commerce, the Farmers Market, the DDA, trying to understand what the current state was, how people were interacting with this particular area. The next thing we did was start to build support for the project, get information out to the current business owners. We've met with a number of downtown business owners individually, including Toyology, Gordon Management, Rockon Third, the Royal Oak Library, Little Tree Sushi, Dixie Moon Saloon, Studio Nails, Bruegger's Bagels, Mr. B's, Fakori Law Firm, Heather Goppi Photography. We also have met with Comet Burger, Buky's Grill, Senior Wellness. We have a meeting set up with Pataia tomorrow, and we're still continuing to go down the list and make sure that we have met with all the business owners that are surrounding the development project. We have gleaned a number of really important insights from that about how people are affected by the project. We've been able to work with them to help solve problems and get specific needs. So, for example, Toyology is helping to support us with an event that we have coming up on August 23rd, the I Dig Royal Oak event, which were one of our celebration events to kick off the next part of the project. But one of their concerns was, you know, they have moms with strollers coming in. So, that was something that we had to think about to address. So, everybody kind of has a different set of needs, and being able to meet with the business owners individually has helped us to address those things, you know, whether it's, "Hey, I need quick parking for restaurant deliveries because that's the core of my business," to, "These are the types of customers I have in," and that's really helped us to know, you know, how to communicate, what's most important, and how are these businesses going to communicate to their customers, and what do they need to communicate to their customers. So, the other thing too was building awareness, that we've done a number of ads for Royal Oak Today, Insight Magazine, the Harvest Guide that goes out to the farmers' market to communicate information and where to get the Parking Guide and to get to the website. We have helped to create Dropbox links, so there's actually another Dropbox right at the police station where you can drive up and drop off your water bill now, if you can't make it up to the front of City Hall to do that. And we've done a lot of meter stickers when the meters were going offline to try to get the information out that, you know, the lot was closing and things were changing. We are also working with the city to start distributing the Parking Guide with the water bills. So, everybody will get that in their water bill and hopefully have information on where to park, how to park, the best place to park for them. Coordinating with event organizers like Art Speeds and Eats, there's a lot of questions about what happens with parking there, so we wanted to make sure they had the most up-to-date information, and we'll continue to do that with events that come up throughout the year, like Spooktacular and the holiday event, and the beer strolls, you know, with the Restaurant Association to make sure that, "Oh, hey, this is where you check in? Well, here are the best places for you to park, and here are the, you know, cheapest options for you." We've also communicated regularly on social media, so using the city website, the Nextdoor app, all the different independent Facebook groups, the City Facebook group, the Downtown Royal Oak Facebook group, the Library Facebook group, Twitter, Instagram. We have regular posts going out about the parking, about the deck parking, about the lot behind City Hall that has been created, and, you know, all of those different changes that I've made, so people understand that, you know, there are new things happening or making them aware of what's happening in all of the project developments. We've also worked with multiple media outlets to provide information, you know, about any development changes that are happening, whenever the lots were closing, whenever there's misinformation, we're spending a lot of time going back and making sure people have accurate information and making sure that they're aware of the changes that are coming. And then last but not least, celebrating all of the achievements. We did start planning the downtown bike rodeo, but that was postponed due to weather, which has now been rolled into the I Dig Royal Oak event to celebrate the police station and City Hall groundbreaking on August 23rd. That's a free event to the public. We're inviting all children, parents, to come out and celebrate that. There's going to be a lot of fun activities associated with that, and we'll have a lot of project materials there too, and be able to answer questions as well. So, it's just a little summary.
Questions for Ms. Robin Saborn? Questions? Commissioner Macy?
The data that you've collected from the building owners, you said it's been really useful to you. Is that been, is there some report or something that the city could?
We've given the report to Don, Todd, and Judy, so I'm not sure how, I don't know, Todd, if you want to answer that.
We receive monthly reports. If you'd like them as a file and received, we can certainly provide that to the commission as well.
Any other questions? No other questions? Commissioner Dubot.
Thank you, Mayor. Just curious, I guess, has anything come up that would require action or response from this body? It seems like you've been able to take everything, take care of most of the concerns that have been raised from the community and business owners, working with staff, and that's been going well?
Yeah, I think that's been going really well, and I don't know, Judy, if you want to add to some of that, but there's been questions, for example, with delivery parking. The city has been fantastic about responding to, "Hey, we need to come up with solutions." You know, there might be too many tickets for the delivery drivers, and, you know, Judy and Todd have worked out those issues, and I think there's a lot of solutions that are happening. Even, the Boji Group has come up with a deal with Bruegger, so all of the people that are working on the construction site are able to go and get free breakfast and food at Bruegger. So, those have been the kinds of things that have come of those meetings, like the partnership with Toyology as well. So, I think there's a lot of good insights that are being gleaned and that are happening, and I think, you know, we can have a lot more examples of that if anybody's interested.
Just a follow-up question on that one. Are we, because I'm also, of course, in my capacity, getting a lot of great ideas, and I'm meeting with a lot of the same business owners that you had mentioned. Actually, just last week, had a really productive dialogue with an individual that owns a couple eateries in town. And one of the questions, with all these great ideas, some of them work out, some of them are, you know, just not feasible once they're really thought through. Are we also, you know, not just promoting the good ideas that come in and executing them, but are we completing that 360-degree feedback back to those who are petitioning ideas and giving them the response to say, "Hey, great idea to offer helicopter landing pads," but, you know, just not, you know, in the works for various reasons?
Yeah, I think, I mean, from our perspective, we're passing those along to the city as we get them in, but I think that, you know, some of the things, I mean, I can think of one thing in particular that probably hasn't been responded to yet, but just not off the table, but I guess we could, you know, we're communicating with the individual business owners as they bring those things in. I haven't, I don't think we've received through the Rethink Royal Oak email any ideas necessarily from the public. We've gotten about a handful of emails with some different questions that we've responded to, but I don't know that we've been getting those ideas. So, I think if other people are receiving those ideas, you know, we should definitely set up a way for you to communicate them to us, whether it's through Todd and Judy or through the general email. That way, we can respond to those as they come in.
It's a good point. We did set that up, how, you know, we should be funneling them in in case you're already working on them. I will say, I haven't had any negative feedback to say we're not necessarily responding, because my experience has been, you know, there was a question in particular about deliveries, you know, I know, or even, you know, picking up like the Grubhub stage deliveries, we, you know, worked with the police department, and we were on that within 24 hours. We had a question about disabled parking, we had a really good idea come in, we jumped on that really quickly. So, I think that, you know, when there is an idea or concern, I mean, I think we are, I haven't had too many complaints that we aren't addressing specific, when someone comes in with a specific issue, like we said, you can't predict all the needs. Like Toyology, how would, I mean, yes, when you do a construction project, you plan for the norms, but, oh, yeah, I guess they would get a lot of strollers. Okay, well, let's address that real quick for them and do what we can do to make sure that we resolve that issue. So, but I just, for some of the ideas that aren't so great are just not feasible, the loop, and I think that's a great suggestion from our end too, if we have ideas or we're hearing things, to make sure they get recorded and put into the email. I mean, sure, we're going to send them to Don and to Tim and everybody, but it's probably a good idea to copy that email as well, just to make sure it gets recorded. Commissioner Perusch.
And I guess this is just a follow-up question, just to clarify, which portal to you all would you prefer? I mean, it's clear that Judy has been working on this, and Don and other staff members and so on, and certainly your organization, but if someone out in the general public says, "Oh, I think this is a good idea," is it the email portal that they should use, or is there a specific person that they should contact?
I think the email portal would be best, then we can make sure it gets funneled to the right people would be easiest, but, you know, I know that Don and Judy and Todd are all available as well. So, you know, but that way it's recorded, it's documented, we've received it, you know, and we can make sure that it gets followed up on.
And that email address is?
Is rethinkro@romi.gov.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a, you can click on it on the website, so the rethinkro.com.
I wanted to be sure people understood that too, that it's right there and they can just click on it.
We've gotten a couple just general community members responding to it, so that's been good, and, you know, it goes back, you know, Judy's the main contact for that. So, but we do get comments, you know, we have been reading all of the comments on all of the independent Facebook groups. It's been quite an education, you know, just to hear what people are thinking. We do read all of them. We're trying to take those into consideration, you know, when we respond and when something new happens, and, you know, as we get into the next phases of the project, we are, you know, thinking about how people are going to react to the next steps.
Commissioner Dubot.
Sorry, just one more question about, so the mechanisms we're using, I think digital's good, and one of the most commonly used, you know, recognized tools in the community is actually the review. Everyone gets it every week in every single house. Is there a budget for doing like a once-a-month, like, paid update? Is that a question on our end? Is that something that's been considered? I'm just curious if...
That wasn't in our budget, but that's certainly something we can discuss.
And local media, you know, our local reporters have done a pretty good job when there's a major development, but they're not going to be able to cover like every, you know, road closure coming up in the next month or...
Yeah, that's where we've been trying to get the word out about like, "Hey, this is going to be closed." Most of those things affect the business owners, like this alley's going to be closed, or we're redirecting traffic, or you cannot cross this particular point, and we've been trying to get those on all of the digital channels because it's sometimes it's very short notice, so we're trying to get that out there. And I think that's part of too, developing those relationships with the business owners because they're the ones that are talking to a lot of the visitors in the community even more often than we are, that can help answer some of those questions. So, to make sure that they know, and when people are coming in and asking them questions, that those happen. But that's why we wanted to get the Parking Guide out and the Water Bill, and then putting the information on Insight and Today, because we update that website regularly, and then we put those changes on there, like, "Oh, this, you know, area's going to be closed," or "This is what's happening next," and trying to let people know where they can find the most up-to-date information. But I definitely think that would be good. The next, anytime we have like an update for, you know, a lot closure, when things are going offline, that's, you know, goes out to the media.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work.
Next, we have Chris Becker from Plant Moran Cressa. As you may remember, they are our owner's rep for the project. Chris is on the ground nearly daily on this project as a liaison not only between the city and our construction manager, but oftentimes with the construction manager and the surrounding businesses as well, making sure that we're keeping clear and concise information out there. So, we have a little bit of a presentation there. Is it loaded up?
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Becker.
Glad to see you again.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to give you the update on the Royal Oak Civic Center construction work that we have going on. And our first page, well, really, that's... On the quick agenda, we'll go through kind of an update for City Hall, police station on design, then we'll go into the sustainable and the green initiatives that we have for both the City Hall and the police station. We'll go through budget, schedule, and then have some questions and answers. But please, during the middle of my presentation, please don't hesitate to come out with any questions you might have while I'm going through it. And first of all, on, yeah, on the City Hall, what you can see is our latest rendering from the architects, Krieger and Clatten Associates. They really give you a good look at the entrance from the east on the City Hall, and you can, and really, we're, this is one of those projects where we're doing well budget-wise. We brought it in. I am going to next go into just another. It's a, it's a view of the west side of the building, so you can see there's a very similar entrance on the west side as it is on the east side, which is the main side we're entering from. Then what we've done, and we've been able to get it in budget, is we have a basement. It's a small basement area, but it's really for the mechanical, electrical, and the plumbing infrastructure to come into the infrastructure to come into the building and then get brought out throughout from there. And what that does by having that basement, and we only have, if you can see, there's a little stair, that's actually an exterior stair, which takes you down to the basement and gets you into the mechanical room. And what that does for us is allows us to have additional space, and I'm not sure well you can see that, but we have a break room and then we have an additional conference room and then the print shop. And those are all in areas that if we didn't have a basement, that's where the mechanical and electrical equipment would be going in the building. So a small, much smaller basement to allow us to stay on, in budget, also allows some additional space up on the first floor, which is very valuable space. Up onto the second floor, it really is broken down into the different areas of the building. One of the nice things about the design that's coming in, virtually every office area for the different, for the different departments is 25% to 30% greater than the existing City Hall. So it gives more flexibility, more room for the people doing their task, also gives you some flexibility for future growth when that is needed in City Hall.
Commissioner Prush?
You just indicated that the workspace is going to be significantly larger for a lot of these offices. I'm guessing that that's because the hallways, which in this building is a ton of wasted space, is non-existent in this building. You certainly have adequate hallways, but you don't have the giant ones that we have in this building. Is that where some of that space reallocation came from?
I'd say some of it, that's correct. They have code-compliant corridors and getting around, but that, that space is more openly utilized between the different offices. So it's part of it, but it's also a little bit bigger building also.
Okay.
Because we're a little over 30,000 square feet in the City Hall now. And then downstairs, the, the small basement adds about 1,200 square feet, and that's more usable space that's on the first floor because of that. But, yeah, all the spaces are bigger. The corridors are a little narrower, but a lot more useful space.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, I had moved it on to the west elevation of the Police Station. And it really looks just similar to what it used to be. There's only two elements in our push to get cost down on the Police Station. You see the big eyebrow above the main entrance into the Police Station, and I just circled. There were eyebrows above the north stairwell and also to the south stairwell, and that was a cost savings measure. The eyebrows were taken off, and yet you still have that good look on the Police Station. I'll go to the north elevation, so that's 11 Mile, when you're looking from 11 Mile, and everything looks the same as it was designed before. We still have the covered and enclosed police vehicle parking area. You've got the north entrance, and then you can see how the parking comes around. And then we have that back parking area, which is the Haven House, that location that we have back there. And moving on, again, showing some of the lower level of the Police Station. We did move one in our design coordination and budget working. We did move an electrical room up on the first floor that we moved out into the parking area, which saved us some space. And that is the area right here, was an electrical rooms. So we got a little bit smaller inside the building, but the rest of the building has stayed the same. And then, excuse me for a second. Moving on to the second floor of the Police Station, which has stayed, again, the same that it was all along because the lower level where the electrical room was not occupied previously. So we've really maintained very similar square footages for the entire Police Station. And so the functionality for the police force and how they operate has maintained the same. And again, we have the bridge connection, which runs to the courthouse, which comes right out there and goes south to the courthouse, and that has been planned for quite some time, and that has been maintained. Okay, moving on to sustainability. One of the things that we pushed really hard through the design and through budgeting is maintaining that these buildings could be LEED certified. And that has happened the entire time. Right now, it's a planned 41 credits if we were going to pursue a LEED accreditation. But I think you all know that that's something that we're not going to do, but we're continuing to keep all of our green initiatives on the project. I would say the only item that we lost green initiative-wise would have been the green roof on the Police Station. But what we did do is we still turned it into a LEED sustainable item, as it's going to be a white roof, to reduce carbon footprint of the building. And again, this is the City Hall, but when you look at both of the, when you look at both of the sheets, they are virtually the same LEED credits up and down. The only, the other green item, and I do apologize for stating that, that we don't have now, and I think you all know why, is the geothermal HVAC. As we drilled our 500-foot well, we unfortunately found methane. And going to a shorter well, up to 300 feet, the size of the, the size of the well field increased roughly 20%, and we just don't have room for it on-site. We still do have our underground water detention, which is going to be east of the farmer's market and west of the Police Station. So all, so that's one of the sustainable items we're keeping. And then to go through many of the others, excuse me for just a moment. As it's easier for me to read on paper. Okay. We have the, mitigated the heat island effect, and it's a light-colored roof. The truth of the matter is, there'll be white-colored roofs. And something that I have personally done on two other buildings, as I have worked on a LEED gold and a LEED cert, two LEED certified buildings. We're incorporating water-efficient landscaping, which is all natural landscaping, water use reduction, like waterless urinals and lower-capacity flush toilets, and many items, a few other items along that line. We're optimizing energy performance of the equipment in the building, LED lights, items along that line. And again, efficiency lighting, mechanical systems, equipment, building envelope design, and advanced glazing systems. And particularly in the Police Station, as you know, that main entrance is a west elevation, so it's going to get a majority of sun coming in. And we do have special glazing in there to reduce the glare and the heat effect that would happen in that lobby of that building. And then we'll have, we'll have energy-efficient windows going up in all of the buildings where they'll have tinted glass on it that maintains and reduces the heat coming in. Further on that, management of waste during construction, which is really a contractor item. We're going to get the maximum amount of credits on that, but the truth of the matter is, I would expect that we're going to be able to maintain 85% to 90% of recycled materials, something I've been fortunate to do on several of my projects, and I know they'll be able to do it here. Utilizing construction materials with recycled content, a lot of the reinforcing steel, even the structural steel will be recycled steel. The masonry will be recycled units that all have that. So we'll keep 10% of new materials. And then utilizing materials found within 500 miles of the project site, we'll also be able to get that 10%. We'll have an increased indoor air quality environment, and there'll be a commissioning agent that will, that will assist us in maintaining and meeting the requirements of the equipment on the job. And then in noting the ventilation, protect the HVA system. One of the things, when you come in the job site, you'll see that all the ductwork will all be sealed at the end, all the units will be sealed. As they slowly get put together, the ceiling will be removed as they're tied together. That's all part of keeping the system absolutely clean to meet the LEED requirements for the All right, moving on from there is our budget line items. And you've probably seen this already for a little bit, but right now, City Hall, parking deck, the park and the site connectivity are all items that are, we're right on budget, we're doing very well. And moving forward on those, on the Police Station, you know, to keep several of the design options we had, we're a little over budget and we're looking at means to exploring alternative funding to supplement some of the original budget. Some of the cost increase, or one of the main crosses increases is, we've taken about a 5% increase in cost just due to the delays of not being able to start roughly a year ago, when we originally planned to start the work around here. Some of the things that helped us get on budget, the thermo, the geothermal, not including that, saved us, you know, anywhere from $800,000 to $900,000 in the overall budget because it was a rather expensive item. The city, and noting on there, City Hall basement, it's truncated, and just for the mechanical and electrical, as I noted before, it's much smaller, so it's a reduced cost, which helps us stay within budget there. Moving on from that slide, we'll get into schedule. And on the Police Hall, or City, City Hall and Police Station, we're looking construction documents to complete in September and October. It'll probably be about a month from now, the City Hall will be complete, and we're looking around mid-October for the Police Station documents to be complete, which means we would then be going out to bid roughly two weeks later. And there'll be multiple packages of bid, bidding components for each project, so we can bring and go through them quicker and then bring them to you for award of those packages. And as it noted there, bidding and awarding September, October, November, we should be to that point. And then commencing construction on the City Hall in November and the Police Station in December of this year. We're looking substantial completion of City Hall before the end of 2019, and then substantial completion of Police Station in the spring of 2020. Now, one of the key things about completing the Police Station, obviously then moving the, is moving out. That's the last entity. Chief and his gang will move out, and then we're able to move into demoing this existing building. So we're, the parking, well, I'll move, go to the parking deck now. We're still on schedule for that June completion, June 2019. The parking deck will be open and operational. Park beginning computer, the park is already beginning the community involvement, and then we're looking for that anticipated construction in September. But again, I wanted to note for the park, we're going to demo the building. We're also not going to do some of the streetscape on Third Street, which is just south of this building, until after the building demo is done, because we don't want to put in something new and then go and travel over it and damage it. So the coordination of streetscape on Third Street, south of this building right now, will happen after the building's demoed and we've started construction on the park. Again, noting, demo spring of 2020, and then connectivity will be ongoing 18, 19, and 20. It's the last of the connectivity work, it will actually be in Third Street, and it should complete slightly ahead of when we complete the park. And I know it's not stated on here, but we would look for park to be complete probably in the fall, mid-fall of 2020. Sooner if we can, but it all depends on what we do with the design of the park. And one of the things is, we have maintained the $5 million budget on the park, so that's, that's built into the budget we looked at earlier. And with that said, are there any questions that I could at least attempt to answer?
Questions from Mr. Becker. I see Commissioner Macy's hand up.
One question, I'm sorry. So we're not pursuing LEED certification? I don't know why. Why is that?
Wow. Todd and Don, any answer to that? That's actually?
I have an answer. We're pursuing LEED, if you see it's certification in quotes.
Right, so I got that.
Yeah, so you have to actually pay a fee, like, to have all the auditing done and everything like that. It's like $75,000.
Yes.
So it's really a way to save $75,000. So essentially, our building will be LEED certified without a plaque on the door.
Okay.
We're more interested in the environmental impact of these buildings than actually having a certification or award or something of that.
And we're going to continue to track, per the LEED scorecard, as we go through the project, so we know where that, we're maintaining those requirements. But is, it really is a plaque and it does cost, well, $75,000. It'd be a substantial for both buildings.
Okay.
Commissioner Dubois?
And just on that point, what we had discussed was, we could spend the 150 between the two buildings on the plaque or invest that in green infrastructure.
Right. So that's going toward the budget for some of the green elements that we're putting in here, as opposed to paying to be officially certified.
Right.
Sorry, question, I see.
Next question. So pushing out this, the construction, the beginning of the construction on the City Hall Police Station until November, December, that's winter. Is there not an increased cost to building in the winter?
Actually, being able to start the building in that timeframe, we've already estimated in some winter conditions, but they're pretty minor cost. The type of work that we perform on these buildings, which are really office buildings in their design, is really foundations, digging the hole, building the foundations, and putting the steel up. Minimal cost at best, and for us to start earlier, we're probably going to save money. There's a couple of real key components to why we would like to move forward. As you've been hearing what's going to happen in Detroit next year, there's large projects that are going to start next year. Hudson's Building, or where the Hudson's Building is at, and also the Wayne County Jail are two very large projects, over, you know, $500 million, and then, what, a couple of billion dollars. We would, it would be best for us at the city to bid out the work, get our steel order made, as we all know the tariff situation, which roughly, right now, we've taken about a 10% increase in costs in steel. And the sooner we get our order made, the better off we are. We will also line up all of our contractors, because there's, there's going to be a bit of a labor glut with the work that's going to happen downtown. Plus, there's, there's billions of work with schoolwork that's going on right now, as you see school bonds get passed. So the sooner we can line up our forces, the more we can save money, the more we can get our plan going forward. But with winter construction, where we were at is, we're going to dig holes, we're going to pour concrete in a hole. The only real winter condition we have to deal with is pouring concrete in a hole is to keep the hole dry, and dry, and then we'll put an insulation blanket over, pour the concrete. The concrete has heat of hydration, which actually keeps the concrete warm, and when we put the blanket over it, we've met all the requirements that we need to do that. That'll keep us moving forward to where we can do our foundation work. Steel takes somewhere in the neighborhood of 12 to 16 weeks to place your order, get your shop drawings in, and then get fabrication going. So we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of three to three and a half months from the time we order. And we'll be able to do all the site work, be able to do the foundations with minimal cost to the job. One thing that's a little worse than winter conditions is spring rain, because it's really unpredictable what kind of rain you're going to get in the spring, and that can, that can actually shut down and impede construction just as much, if not more than, winter. So I'm one of those guys, I used to be a construction manager, and I've actually built four buildings in this area, all starting foundations. four buildings in this area, all starting foundations in the winter. With City Hall actually starting in November, we're actually, that's really not a winter month, and December isn't much of a winter month. January and February are more than winter months that give you the more cold. But we've made the plan for it already, and we're actually, I think, going to save money by moving forward.
Commissioner Levaser.
Do we anticipate the surface parking that's currently around the Farmers Market and the Courthouse to remain available through Art, Speech, and Eats and Labor Day?
Oh, yes, very much so. We're actually not looking to fence off for the Police Station area until, really, December. We will fence off for the City Hall in November, so that, in November, we'll take the parking where the City Hall is, which is just south of Farmers Market. But right after Labor Day, we're going to start the connectivity work on Second Street, which will be just south of the Farmers Market. And we've got a pretty detailed phasing plan that we've worked out with the city, the CM, and we actually presented it to the Farmers Market staff last week. They have concerns, and we will continue to communicate and address their concerns. Obviously, we have to leave the access openings available, particularly on Saturday is their big thing, but every weekend, we're going to remain the access they need to get into the Farmers Market. But to really answer your question, we're not going to bother their parking until, really, November, when we take City Hall space.
Commissioner Perusch.
Back to the cost aspect, you mentioned that everything is pretty much on track budget-wise, except the Police Station. And then you also mentioned that there was, in general, a 5% cost increase due to the delay, which was due to the litigation. Does that mean that the City Hall and everything other than the Police Station was able to absorb that 5% cost increase, that you were able to cut enough so that they're on budget? Or does those figures reflect the 5% increase?
Well, those figures actually reflect the 5% increase, but what we did through with City Hall is, we went through a value engineering process on looking at how we can reduce costs. That's why we have the small basement, rather than 5,000 square feet, that was really wanted for more storage space, bring the print shop into the basement, bring WROK into the basement. We really couldn't afford it, because that basement itself was $700,000 to $800,000 in cost. We had, you know, early on, just a year of additional cost, you know, really doesn't allow us to do the basement, plus we took a look at the steel and how we could save money with the steel, and we put a new roofing system in with a structural engineer. That meets all codes and all requirements that you need for the building.
And then in terms of the increased cost for the Police Station over what was projected originally, is that reflective of the 5% increase in cost due to the delay, or is that other items that have been added in, or that you found out to be more expensive than originally planned?
It reflects. We've also gone through the value engineering, as I showed you, the two little eyebrows that came off at a savings of between $70,000 and $100,000. But we also simplified the parking area where the Haven House goes, we took the electrical room, brought it up into the garage. We've gone through a value engineering process in the Police Station also. There was a lot of trazo flooring, which is a really high-end finish, that, there's many tile flooring that can be done for one-third the price. So we looked at a number of things to get it where it's at right now, but we still need some additional funding.
Can you put, it may be here, but can you put a dollar amount on that, just in general terms, that increase in cost?
I can, I could probably work on it to get you one, yes, but we know, there was some other things that increase cost, but the delay in time is pretty easy to show 5%. What we didn't realize, and adds into that, is that steel tariff item that we know really increased steel by 10%. I know you, City Council, wanted prevailing wages on the job, prevailing wages increased the cost on the job, although prevailing wages are virtually impossible to enforce now. It doesn't mean that we still can't ask for them, so that we have good wage earners, we have the high-quality workers that we want. That's all built into the price that we have.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I answered your question correctly, but those things are in that total budget.
Okay. I guess what I'm, I guess what I would like to have at some point, it doesn't have to be right now, is to translate that 5% increase in cost to the Police Station based on the litigation delay.
Okay.
I'd like to see that dollar amount.
We can do that.
Yeah, we can break that out. I would say, project-wise, the overage was about $2.8 million in total. The majority of that was accomplished to get into budget by cutting, and it was cutting City Hall basement, and it was cutting the geothermal out, even though that wasn't what drove the decision to cut geothermal out, it was the site conditions themselves that made that decision possible. We do have a possible solution to bring our Police Station back in budget. The chief can elaborate on that, but we're looking at, there are forfeiture funds available that can be applied to technology, to the tune of about $1.1 million, that will allow us to shift that money back into Shell and Core and bring the Police Station back on budget.
Okay. I guess I appreciate all the efforts to compensate for the increase in cost that you had absolutely no control over whatsoever, in terms of redesign, and looking at materials, and relooking at use of space, and so on and so forth. I think that's significantly to your credit, that it sounds like all of them, despite the litigation delay, which I'm sure is a huge factor, and the steel tariffs, and the other components that you had no control over, that you still probably are going to bring this all in under budget. And that's for a project, a public project that's as large as this is, that's fairly significant, and I certainly appreciate it, I think we all appreciate it.
Thank you, it's been a real team effort. Everyone, all the designers, the city folks, the CM have all put a lot of effort into it to get it to this point.
Commissioner Levaser.
I just want to clarify something, because Commissioner Perusch has referenced a couple times here, a litigation delay, and my understanding is, there was not any injunction issued that stopped us from moving forward, is that correct, Mr. Gill?
There was initially an injunction that was issued relative to the construction of the office building, but that was lifted when the case was dismissed after a ballpark a couple of months, something like that.
Okay, but there's never been an injunction on this part of the project, the City Hall, the Police Station, of that nature?
There was briefly a stay that was in place relative to the construction of the parking deck, but again, that was dismissed after about a month after our motion.
Okay, so about a month slowed down.
Ballpark, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to follow up, you mentioned a few things that added to cost, steel tariffs, you mentioned prevailing wage, do you have a ballpark on what prevailing wage is costing us?
It was anywhere from 3% to 5%, but when we put the breakdown together, I'll have that in there.
All right, thank you.
I commend you for that, because you're going to get the better quality workers, and that's what you really want.
So it's not a cost, it's a quality standard.
Commissioner Dubow.
Yeah, I think we've been clear from the beginning that, you know, what we're investing here is a quality building for our residents. We don't want to do anything, you know, we don't want to go through all this trouble and expense and inconvenience to our residents, and not get the value for the dollars that we're putting in. And so that's why prevailing wage is the right thing to do. As I recall, the delay was actually a result of us not being able to issue the bonds while there was the pending litigation, and then not being able to issue the bonds, we couldn't start the construction project, which delayed us for years. The litigation's cost us in the neighborhood of $1 to $3 million, which is unfortunate and counterproductive. I'm really pleased to see all the green elements that we've been pushing for since the beginning, just on a couple of those, I know you said we couldn't do the green roof on the Police Building, we had talked about doing it on the covered parking, is that something that was investigated?
That was actually the portion that we removed on the covered parking. One thing you will see in the Police Station is, there's going to be a live wall in the lobby. We were able to maintain that, so you have a green wall in the lobby. I gotta admit, I haven't seen one before, but it'll be pretty interesting.
Cool. So I see we've got, you know, on the LEED scale, we get some points for water reduction elements. It says 50% reduction in usage, is that a 50% reduction in runoff from the site? Or is that water, because then there's 30% in usage in the building, or am I looking at...
Because it should be 1% in usage in the building.
Is that what I'm looking at?
But you remember, the water detention area we have keeps the runoff from the site.
Understood, and what we want is to put as little in that detention as possible, we want to put the water back in the ground. And so when we talk about water reduction landscaping and that having a value, is that, that's water that we're putting back in the ground, is that rain gardens, is that bioswells, is that...
I'll have to get back with you on what exactly that pertains. I got to get with the design team and what they're designing in, so we can get you that information.
Cool, okay, I mean, there's value to the residents, obviously, just in doing detention, which reduces the strain on the system, but ideal state is that we're not even putting it into the system to begin with, and we want it to go back into the ground, so a little clarity on, I would like to understand, so right now, it's 100% concrete, and everything that lands on that concrete slab is going into the sewer system?
There is some pervious pavers.
What are we pulling out of it?
There are some pervious pavers that go in some areas, so that really helps, just what you're talking about remaining, Kevin, the moisture remain onsite. But I'll get you a better list of exactly what's going on and where.
It'd be a big win, I think, to say, like, we've reduced what we're putting into the system, even though we're slowing it down with detention, overall reduction, 20%, 25% because of some of the features we're doing here, I think that'd be good to know. And then, I see we're not doing any onsite energy production, you know, we had talked a little bit about wind and solar, maybe that's not cost-effective right now. Is there anything that we need to be considering to keep that door open in a cost-effective way going forward? As far as just the structure of the building itself, the wiring of the building, I'm not an expert in this, I just want to make sure that if the capital is there, and it becomes cost-effective, on, you know, the payback horizon shrinks to a point where, like, we want to invest in it, is this building structured in a way that we could retrofit some sort of onsite production?
I've got to get with the design teams, I know what you're asking, but I don't have the answer for it. I do know that due to the green roof above the covered parking, it was a part of the reason we saved as much as we did off of it, because those green roofs are very heavy, and you have to beef up the structure for it. So when we could value engineering, the structure got a little simpler, above the covered parking only, not the rest of the building. We'll get, I'll ask that question to the design team, partners in architecture, and then also to the City Hall, and what additional things could be added, future windmills, solar panels, other means of generating electricity?
I think, that's, I think, one of the top priorities from the beginning, you know, one of our biggest problems with this building is the inability to retrofit it, and I want to make sure that we're setting, you know, future commissions and generations up to get the full value out of the new structures. And so I want to be designing with an eye toward...
We'll get you some information on it.
Great, thank you. And, you know, excellent job keeping us on budget and on schedule in spite of the legal shenanigans, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Levaser.
There seems to be some throwing of some of our local taxpayers under the bus, trying to blame them for some costs in this litigation, because of the litigation, and that doesn't seem to match up with my understanding of the finances of this. The litigation was just resolved, what, two and a half weeks ago, something like that? We sold those bonds earlier in the spring, if I recall correctly, so I don't know that we can blame any delays in getting the financing to that litigation. Certainly, if that's the case, I have not seen any report from staff telling me that bonds, the selling of bonds was delayed because of litigation. If there's a report out there, it certainly wasn't shared with me.
I gotta admit, I don't know that I can answer that question.
I wasn't intending for you to, it's just, there was throwing of taxpayers under the bus, I didn't want that to go unanswered.
Well, there was a delay in issuing the bonds, Commissioner Levaser, because, remember, it's only been now that, I think, a couple appellate courts have thrown out the case and showed that the plaintiffs didn't have any standing, and are perplexed why the case keeps moving forward, but the original case had to be resolved before you can issue the bonds, or you pay a significant premium on those bonds, which drives cost and/or no one will buy them, and you have issues issuing them with open litigation, even though it's frivolous, or, you know, however one wants to view the litigation, nonetheless, it's litigation. So, you know, the first ruling needed to occur first. The appellate process, as we've seen, you know, has gone in favor of the city on a couple of occasions, but that's, you got to go back to the first ruling, in my opinion, but I can leave that to staff to answer more succinctly. Commissioner Macy.
Well, not to change the subject, but I can't stop thinking about the Michigan winter here. So I just have never heard of a large construction project like this, starting in, I know you say it's not winter, but digging a hole in December sounds like winter to me. So if the foundation can be laid and this blanket can be put over it, what happens during the snows of January and February and March, are we at a standstill then, are we able to keep moving forward during that time?
We'll continue to put the foundations in until we're complete, and I actually expect that to go from November into January, particularly with the Police Station involved. And you really, once you break through the frost, you're into normal ground, it may sound different, but just an example, something I've done before, if you've ever seen that building at University Drive in 75, it's right off the side, it has Plan Rand on it, it's kind of funny. It's a five-story office building that I built back in 2001, and we put all the foundations in in January and February. Once you break through the frost, you protect the ground, so that it won't freeze, and that's the insulated blanket, you don't even have to heat it. The next day, you pour the concrete in, and the heat hydration along with the insulation blanket, and the foundation stays. And there's another building back up, an EDS office building, I did the same thing for. Part, some foundations that we did, I got to be an owners rep on the Little Caesars Arena project, some of those foundations were put in in the winter months. It's not untypical for Michigan to do that in November and December, actually, the grounds rarely has any frost in it, rarely. January and February, it does, and you break through the frost, you keep the hole warm, and you pour the concrete in, and you can meet all the requirements of the project.
And the construction can continue, sorry?
Oh, yeah, construction could, really, once you get the foundation in, the next, you can do some underground work with underground plumbing, and you can put all that work in and cover it up, and protect it with the blankets for heat-wise. The real next thing from there is, the steel goes up onto the foundation. It's, these type of buildings, when they're office-type buildings, that's what would happen.
Right. Mr. Becker, just to be clear, you're connecting, once the foundations, which are weather tolerant, or temperature tolerant, which you have the remedy for, with the blankets and the concrete heats and all of that, then at any temperature, I mean, notwithstanding, like 470 degrees Kelvin, where, you know, the concrete will snap, that you can connect the concrete to the steel, and the steel to the steel, and weld, and...
Set the steel right on top of the foundations, and until you get all the steel up, you got to plummet, you got wires that hold it all together. And we'll move forward with steel, and it's actually a very productive timeframe to install steel in February, March, April, it's very productive. And there's not a lot of ironworkers working out on other projects in the winter, so it's benefit to our project and our schedule to do that. I recommend it. Really, minimal extra cost, minimal.
All right, well, sounds good, I look forward to seeing it continuing to progress throughout the winter.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perusch.
I was looking at the layout of the Police Station lower level, and I'm just reading the real fine print, this woman's locker room down in the corner, there's a little tiny notation for a little tiny room called mothering room, is that for nursing babies?
I think I can answer that better.
Chief?
Sorry. We added to this station, and we talked about early on, was, we have sleeping rooms in, you know, a men's and women's sleeping room for the officers who work late, have court, and that's what it is, it might be labeled mothering room, but I think it's a place for the, you know... It might be labeled mothering room, but I think it's, it's a place for the, you know, the officers to sleep.
Okay, all right.
They welcome the nurse there, too, if that's what that's supposed to reference. But that's, that's what that room's designed for.
Okay, all right, thank you. It was just, I had never seen a room called that before, so, okay, thank you.
You got a better view of it than I do. I can't even see it.
Commissioner Dubac.
Hey, Mayor, just got a question for the city manager. I know, and we've talked a lot about parking as part of the staging here. Obviously, when we break ground, that'll be a couple more lots that come offline before our new deck comes online. I know we're confident that the existing deck that has still been tremendously underutilized can meet the majority of the demand. But we had talked about some auxiliary plans going forward, perhaps angle parking on Troy or on Third Street or on Williams. Are any of those still in the mix? Is that something we're still considering?
We're looking at a number of options. We're looking at using, putting some employees into the Imagine Deck.
Okay.
We're looking at a couple other things as well. We're also looking at setting up a shuttle for Farmer's Market Saturday and Sunday to be able to get people over to one of the parking structures.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're, we're looking at everything that we, we think is reasonable.
Okay, I think definitely finding ways to get our folks parked, you know, offsite and to work is, is a good idea. I'm just curious about the infrastructure we discussed. We just throw down some temporary lines. Are those still in the mix? Is that being discussed?
It's an option.
Okay.
I think it's worth a shot for the fact that, you know, you got about six months of overlap here between the, between when the new garage gets up. Right outside here.
True.
So, you know, are we gonna get that planned when we get the plans for site approvals or in September? Or is there a timing we can get to understand?
You'll probably have it, I would think, before that, but.
Okay, all right. So you guys are vetting some things. I know we've talked about some things.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Cool, thank you.
It's like we said, all ideas gotta be vetted. You know, if you put something in and all of a sudden fire trucks can't go through, that's a problem. You know, we just want to make sure, get our tape measures out and everything works right.
Any other questions for Mr. Becker, Mr. Fenton, Mr. Johnson? Commissioner Lavassar.
For Mr. Fenton, it has to do with the parking on Third Street. I know some of the businesses right there at Third and, you know, just to the east of Main are concerned with the dumpsters that are taking up some parking spots. And I know they'd contacted staff with regard to those. Are you able to give us some sentiment when, when those parking spots will be opened up again?
We're hoping, we know that there is a beautification project in that alley that'll more than likely be taking place directly behind the office building through the month of August. We're hoping to have that completed by Art Speeds and Eats. They'll move as fast as they can. But they're, they're looking at activating that alley as, as part of their development as well.
Right, so maybe another three weeks or so.
I, I think that's fair.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Becker. It looks like you got a few things to get back with us on, but we appreciate your update, and it was pretty thorough, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, where'd my agenda go? Okay. Whoops, I think I just lost my agenda. All right, that brings us down to item number nine, which is the award of the Civic Center connectivity.
I can take that again. Thank you again. The, the request here is to award the connectivity work for elements that are related to the new Royal Oak City Hall. The work was competitively bid. It's been split out into five packages, as I've outlined in the letter. Roughly, site demo, earthwork and utilities, fence and barricades, asphalt paving, site concrete and electrical package. In total, this, this comes out to $2,925,164. The construction manager will be holding these contracts. I provided the bid tabs for each of them as well, and it is within our connectivity budget for the project.
Questions for Mr. Fenton. Commissioner Lavassar.
I noticed that one of the project managers is, forgive me if I mispronounce, Colasanti slash O'Brien. And I note that one of the subcontracts is with a Colasanti Specialty Services. Would it be fair to say that those companies are affiliated in some way?
Yes, it would be self-performing if awarded.
All right, I, I do have concerns, and I'll just express it, that, you know, to me, you either should be a project manager or you should be a contractor placing bids. But I do see that there's some potential conflict there when you're essentially filling both those roles. And, and they very well may, may be the best one to provide this service. I saw the three bids. But I, I do have to question whether or not, and this may not be fair to them, but, but whether the, 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 the proposal, the request for bids was, was kind of designed in a way where they would be the high, they would be the successful bidder. It's, it's not ideal that they're serving both these roles here.
Mr. Becker has some comments on that?
Having the ability to have done this in the past, one of the things we always get concerned about with self-perform is the contractor that bids it does not get to read and review the contract, or the, the numbers as they come in and bid. So we had Colasanti submit his bid the day before. They were due by everyone else. And Plant Moran Cressa actually opened the bids and reviewed them, putting that bid tabulation together. Now, the bid tabulation is on Colasanti's form, because I provided the numbers to them. But to make sure that the bid was legitimate and fair to all the bidders, that's how we took the bids. Colasanti has a separate group that does concrete work, and they have a construction management side of their company, too. So the, the concrete forming and placement group is a completely separate entity from their construction management group. So it's not, the people overseeing the work that we have going on here in Royal Oak have nothing to do with the concrete work that's gonna be performed by their subcontractor, Colasanti Construction. And, and that was one of our concerns going in. But we also knew they're one of the better concrete contractors in the area, so we did do that.
Okay, but wouldn't it be fair to say that Colasanti O'Brien will have some supervisory role with regard to Colasanti Specialty Services to make sure that they perform that contract appropriately?
Absolutely.
And that certainly, I, I, I want the, the product manager to have the loyalty to us and no one else, and not to a subcontractor, and that's a concern.
I, I couldn't agree with you more, that that, the oversight is, they're a subcontractor. They're not, you know, they're not part of the group that's working out here. We want the best people. We want it done right. And we want supervision overseeing them for the owner's best interests, not Colasanti's. I, I agree, and that's part of how we went about it. So it will happen that way.
Any other comments? Questions? Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there support supported by Commissioner Douglas? Further discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes six-one. All right, so that brings us to item number ten, which is a resolution in opposition to legislation regarding short-term rentals. And, Mr. Prizes?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Commission. This is a follow-up from the discussion of the short-term rental report at the July twenty-third City Commission meeting. During the discussion, legislation that has been introduced in the state legislature was mentioned. These bills, which are House Bill forty-five oh-three and Senate Bill three-twenty-nine, were introduced in April of 2017. They would effectively preempt any local zoning ordinance and negatively affect the ability of local governments to make land use and zoning decisions. These bills currently haven't seen any actual activity in committee or any legislative activity, but it is anticipated that they may be moved through the process during a lame duck session. So we're going to want to continue to monitor them using our friends at the Michigan Municipal League. During the previously mentioned meeting, staff was directed to prepare a resolution in opposition to this legislation. We have done so, and assuming adoption, we'll be sending them to our representatives in the state legislature.
Any questions? Mr. Prizan? Commissioner Dubac?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Prizan. This is a very well-written resolution. I think it perfectly captures the conversation from a week ago, or two weeks ago, three weeks, how long has it been? Long enough. And just to clarify, you know, in that conversation, we as a commission did not give any indications whether or not we thought, you know, these temporary, these types of rentals should be regulated, or whether or not Royal Oak would want to or doesn't want to. This resolution speaks perfectly to the issue that we think it's best left to local municipalities to address. You know, our needs are different than Traverse City, or different than Grand Haven, or different than Madison Heights, so. But I'll move for the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there support supported by Commissioner Perush? Commissioner Perush?
This resolution talks about zoning and the impact on our ability to zone and regulate short-term rentals or not. It would essentially take that away from us. The other thing that it impacts, and it's not mentioned in here, which is fine, but it also impacts the ability of condominium associations to self-regulate. Because a lot of condominium restrictions say that the use of each individual condominium, residential condominium unit, has to be residential and not commercial. What this legislation would say is effectively, use by short-term rentals is not commercial, which means that no condominium association could prohibit the short-term rental of any of their condominium units within the condominium association. And that is a significant change, and beyond any land use law that I'm aware of that takes significant control of their individual association away from a condominium association. So not only, not only does it significantly impact our ability to zone and regulate short-term rentals, it also significantly impacts condominium, residential condominium associations and how they regulate their own residential activities within the association. So it, it's a very, we know that it's being pushed by the real estate brokers and the real estate industry because they see a lot of threats to this within their industry. There's a lot of pressure in Lansing to have this go through, which is why we're terrified that it's gonna go through at midnight or two o'clock in the morning during the lame duck session. But this would really have significant, significant impacts on, on residential property use within condominium associations as well as within single-family communities. And that's why we are so strongly opposed to this legislation. And not only us, you're gonna see a lot of communities come out of the woodwork opposed to this. But we'll keep our fingers crossed that the legislature listens, but we'll see.
Commissioner Lavassar.
I, I read the proposed, proposed statutes. And to me, I didn't find them offensive. What I see there is, is basically they say you have a property that's gonna be used for rental property, whether it's you're renting month-to-month or renting for a year, or you're renting short-term. It's the same type of burden upon, the neighborhood burden upon the property. And the proposed statutes basically says, treat them the same, whether it's a, a long-term rental or a short-term rental. You can still do the same inspections. You can still do the same requirement to register as rental. You can do all those different things. Just don't say you can't do it this way, but you can do it that way. And so I, I don't see it as, as a particular problem. It appears to me that this legislation is geared toward making sure that localities don't make irrational decisions to prohibit something that is not creating a particular burden. I know we, we've talked about this a couple weeks ago. We, we have not identified any particular burdens there coming from these short-term rentals. And so I, I, I see the reasoning, the rationale behind it. I did want to ask the clerk, with regard to these resolutions, I know at the beginning of the, of the, of the year, we signed a generic resolution form. Do, do we use that resolution form with all of our signatures, even if it's not a unanimous vote?
We don't have to.
All right.
Commissioner Douglas?
I'm not sure what Commissioner Lavassar means about irrational decisions. If he's talking about the decisions of local leaders and the people in their community to decide how they should manage properties in their community. Nobody's dictating how it's going to happen. This resolution simply says that that control should be decided at the local level. And for people who believe in smaller government and less government, assigning a decision like this to the state legislature is the very antithesis of less government.
I'd also argue that localities don't mean us up here. It means, in our example, the sixty thousand people that call Royal Oak home. Letting them decide through their elected officials, through referendums. However, our community wishes to decide what's best for us. And I do see a distinction between long-term rentals and short-term rentals. They're very different in nature. And I think giving us the autonomy to distinguish between those two, because they serve two very different groups and two very different needs, and have two very different sets of pros and cons, I think is important for us to understand in the framework and context of our community, not just a generalization or, or push by, you know, a lobbying group here, so.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Any other discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, passes six-one. All right, that brings us to the two additional items that we added to the agenda. We'll first start with the discussion of high-water bills, brought up by Commissioner Lavassar and Commissioner Dubac, I believe.
Thank you, and I certainly don't expect to have any answer today. But I, I, when this, the, the problem that the powers are having came to light, it made me wonder a few things. Number, number one, what our technology can do. Does our technology give us the ability to alert us or alert our customers as to any unusual high-water usage? And if it doesn't provide that type of ability to alert, is there technology out there? What would the cost be to obtain that technology? Things of that nature. So, so that's, that's my first question. The second is, is I'd like to get kind of a handle on how frequent of a problem this is within our community. Perhaps a report from staff that, you know, lets us know, okay, we, we've had this many quarterly bills in excess of $750 during the last year. And of those, this number can be attributable to a malfunctioning exterior reader versus this other percentage is something else going on. And I don't know if you need a motion in that respect, but that's the type of information I think would be helpful for us to make decisions here.
Some of it I can answer right now, if you'd like.
Certainly.
Let's start with the technology, the ability to alert somebody to a high bill. Right now, we really don't have much of an ability to alert somebody to a high bill, except after it's already occurred, because we only read the meters every three months. The latest and greatest technology in water meter reading is using what's called a radio read fixed base system. That means that the meter is in radio communication with an antenna tower so that it can actually read very frequently. In fact, some of the manufacturers actually suggest you could read the meters hourly if you wanted to. That can identify leaks very well and alert you to it. Then you need to follow through with it as far as notifying the individuals. That's something that we don't have right now. We do have some places where we are doing radio reads using a mobile read technology, where there is a transceiver in a vehicle, and the vehicle does a drive-by to get a read, but those are only done on a quarterly basis. Now, we have had plans or thoughts of, of going ahead with a complete re-metering program for several years. But it's been an item that, because other things have had higher priority, it's been pushed aside, and we haven't done it. it's been pushed aside and we haven't done it. But we're very interested in going to a fixed base type system.
I think, Mr. Johnson, the first part of that question too is, I mean, what do we have, 25,000, 28,000 water customers? This is, I think, the first time since I've been up here for seven years that I've heard of a bill this high or a bill even...
Oh, we've had bills higher than this.
Okay. Well, I mean, I know we've had some commercial properties that had some really high bills.
We've had residentials with higher than this.
Okay, great. So, is this a systematic issue? Is this something that happens? I mean, the last one I ever remember being made aware of was former Mayor Ellison had like a $2,000 bill. And we determined it was his toilet that was leaking. And, you know, that was where we had some of this conversation about, well, what if we could inform residents, you know, monthly or at least get ahead of it, you know? And we started looking into the technology, not based on that, but just in general. When we talked about the water budget, but how frequently does this happen? Is this something, I mean, we send out, we have 25,000 water customers, we send out 100,000 billing statements a year. How often does this happen? Do we have any information where we have these obscure bills that go from $200 a quarter to boom, $2,000 a quarter?
Well, the most common problem we have is one that may be endemic and it's the remote read device. That's not what's involved here. The remote read device problem is you've got a water meter in your basement. You've also got an electronic device on the outside of your house. It's connected by a wire. The water meter actually generates electricity and sends a jolt to that unit outside periodically when the meter clicks over. In the older ones, there was like an odometer reading on the front of it. The newer ones actually have a, what we call a gun, meter reading device that they would actually just plug in. And the meter reading device will get the reading instead of them writing it down in a book. But it's still using the same basic technology as far as how the one is communicating with the other, and it's subject to the same problems. It gets old, it corrodes, sometimes you get reductions, you don't read all of the water. And then when we finally get a real read on the inside meter, on the real meter, there's a big difference. We do send out postcards. Basically, most people get them once every two years where we ask them to take a manual read, but we get a very poor response rate on that. So, we've got a lot of houses that we haven't had a read on, an inside read in some time.
But that's one issue that's, I don't want to say understandable, but that's not an issue necessarily with the meter. That's an issue with...
No, it's not an issue with the meter.
The wire. Because mine, actually, I'll full disclosure, I got a water bill for like 15 bucks. And I was like, what? My contractor had accidentally snipped the line or whatever when he was doing work in the basement, clearing some stuff out. And we had him come back and I got a doozy on the bill for six months. But I used the water, you know, I just didn't pay for it for three months.
Many years ago, when I worked for the city of Wayne, we had, one of our meter readers got into a house because he knocked on the door and the housewife let him in to go down and take a read on the meter because I don't remember what the reason was, he was suspicious of it. He got downstairs and found that somebody had actually cut the wire and installed a switch so they could turn the water reading device on and off at will. So, they would turn it on, allow some usage to go through so it looked like, you know, some water was being used, but then they'd turn it off and they wouldn't get a hold of it. Usually, however, it's just a matter of failure that the system doesn't work.
Right. So, there's really two buckets. What would you say in your experience here? I mean, you've been with the city for a while and have probably done some research on this.
Without actually doing the kind of research that was suggested by Commissioner Macy and then I think with Commissioner Levasser too, actually going through and scanning the, having the system scan the bills, I couldn't give you that answer because I can only respond to the ones that reach me. Most of them don't reach me. I very, very seldom deal with a water bill issue. In fact, when I get a water bill issue, I send it back to the treasurer usually because it's the treasurer's job to deal with it.
But we're not getting thousands of these every year?
No.
To the extent that they're high enough to be brought to your attention, whether through the exterior meter reading or in this case, whatever the case is, we don't know, or I shouldn't say we don't know, that's not the issue. The exterior meter isn't the issue. You're getting a handful of those a year? Is it fair to say...
Yeah, I would say a handful that I become aware of. That doesn't mean that, I don't know how many the treasurer is dealing with.
Okay.
Commissioner Gibbs?
The report that we received, that we all received, showing the accuracy of the meter that was removed from the Powers' house, said that it was 99.6% accurate with roughly, I Googled it, it was 28,142 households in Royal Oak, something like that. We use 28,000 for a nice round number. Point four percent of that is about 112. So theoretically, and...
No, no. What that means is that particular meter was 99.6% accurate. It's got nothing to do with percentage of households in Royal Oak.
It doesn't mean point four percent of the meters fail.
It means for every 100 gallons that go through the meter or 102 feet that go through the meter, it's going to report 99.6.
But if it's doing that on one meter, how can it not be doing that on any number of other meters?
Other meters could be reading low, could be reading, yeah, that's true.
But...
But that number doesn't relate, doesn't actually prove anything related...
Okay, well, that number may not...
To any other meter. It's only a report on that particular meter.
Okay, but it's still accuracy overall that's a concern. From going from 150, $170 for three months to $3,600 is a really big jump. I mean, that's huge. And, you know, that's three mortgage payments for some people. And some people may not, they may call whatever department and be told, well, that's what your bill was, so that's what you have to pay. I'm making that up. I'm not saying that was said to anybody in particular. And they do. And I can think of a number of demographics that would probably just do that because they would, you know, it's the city and we'll do what we're told. They wouldn't have the courage or the knowledge to ask more questions. So, it's concerning. And this is really concerning. And if I had a $3,600 bill, there goes my mortgage payment for a couple of months. I think everyone here would be in the same situation. As far as I know, none of us in this room are independently wealthy. So, I guess what we need to do is figure out a better way to do it. Over the weekend, I was speaking with somebody who lives in Huntington Woods and they have one of the, I'm not sure how new the meter is, but it's read outside from a vehicle, from a meter reader's gun or car or...
A drive-by.
A drive-by, yeah. I don't like saying that though. From a vehicle.
There's a transceiver in a vehicle and the vehicle, as you drive by, pulls the meter.
And then he, what I was also told by the homeowner, because it had been checked, that there was some irregularity in their readings and they plugged a gun, not a gun, a key or something into the meter and they were able to get a report of almost hourly usage or a report of daily usage.
I'm not aware of anything that does that. The technologies that I'm familiar with actually require that you have read it, that it's not being stored in the meter, it's installed in your computers.
Right. Every time you store the read. If you want to read it every hour, you could, it would store it, but it's not actually being stored on the, but they could have a different meter, but...
And these are things I don't know, it was, but it kind of made me think that maybe since we had a handful of people here now today and there's been other businesses and homeowners that have had really big readings or really big water bills that, you know, it's something that we should be investigating on getting a better reading system or a better water meter for all of us.
Commissioner Dubac?
Sure. I mean, I think that's the whole first part of the conversation we've been having, what are the other technologies available and it's been something on the radar for a long time. And I'm sure those systems are not, you know, absolutely perfect, but certainly would have the benefit of alerting residents. Now, I know that RDPS do alert folks or someone did one time when I was, I had new sod and I had a leaky toilet and they knocked on my door and said, we've noticed a spike in your usage. And I told them I had a leaky toilet and that I had just fixed it and that I was watering way more than usual. But that quarter, my bill went up from 180 to 970 or something, which I know I used the water. And that was only for about a month out of the three-month period. So, the idea that you can get there, you can get there. Like, it's a crazy amount of water, but you can get there. Now, there's two questions, right? One, what can we do to improve the process to make sure we're safeguarding against this kind of thing happening again, right? And two, I think there's a conversation about like what recourse is there? And my understanding is right now, if the meter is not tested faulty, if we paid for the water to the water authority and the bill to the house is what the meter said it is, right now, what legal options are at our disposal or these residents' disposal if there's a difference between what they say they used and what the meter says?
Well, right now, the ordinance doesn't give any of us the ability to make an adjustment except to correct an error.
So, that is the law?
That's my interpretation of it.
And an error, as we'd be defining it, is that the equipment has failed?
Either a misread on the meter or a failure of the meter would be an error.
Okay.
Now, we've verified that the meter was read correctly. I mean, there's no indoor-outdoor discrepancy in this case. And the meter has been tested. Now, I'm perfectly willing to let the meter be tested again. You know, we'll send it some to another testing agency if they would like to send it to another testing agency. I'll even let them pick the testing agency.
I sympathize, you know, with the folks who have come out tonight, like if you're certain every fiber of your being, I did not use this water. But every system we have in place says it was used. It puts us in a really precarious situation. And so, I sympathize with that. But as a matter of policy, right now, there aren't options on the table for us, as I understand. Is that accurate?
Well, we're starting to get into some legal issues here. That's my opinion. It's not necessarily the city attorney's opinion, but you also have the option of your ordinance, you can change the ordinance.
Sure. Well, and I guess that's, because that's where the conversation, I think, has been going. I think, I've racked my brain and I don't know how you can just have someone verbally say, I don't believe I used that water. And then have a policy saying, well, then I guess you don't have to pay it. Like, we can't, there's no, I can't think of a policy that makes sense that would operate that way. So, our options are to upgrade the equipment to reduce the likelihood of this kind of thing happening. So, if the water is being used, residents are alerted or, you know, we have 100% confidence that, you know, the water was used. That's where I'm at on this. I feel like, you know, we're just like, talk about the elephant in the room. It's, that's a huge bill to get. It's painful for anybody and I don't want to seem like I'm callous to that. But from a policy perspective, I don't know how to fix this situation, but I very much want to have a conversation about how do we reduce the likelihood this ever happens again.
Remetering would be the way to reduce the likelihood, but I got to warn you that a remetering process is going to find every existing discrepancy between the indoor and outdoor device that's out there.
Which I had when I sold my own house.
Instead of finding them over a long period of time, you're going to find them all at once.
And that's something that came up in various discussions I've had with people at Costco.
Commissioner Gibbs, real quick, I know Commissioner Macy's been wanting to speak.
And this will be quick, that the majority of...
Commissioner Gibbs, I got to call, I just got to call the order. We'll get right back after Commissioner Macy and Commissioner Levasser.
Okay. Especially because I want to follow right up on what Commissioner Dubac was saying about, I agree that this is a really tricky policy issue. I'm not sure that it's not solvable. I don't have the immediate solution to this, but I was thinking, I mean, even if, let's say there were a leak and this water was all used and we have a situation where someone who's had a $180 water bill every quarter for the 10 years they've lived there suddenly has a $3,000 one, that still seems like a problem that we should be thinking about to, how are we going to address this maybe as a community? This is a burden that's really, it's a really high burden. As Commissioner Gibbs says, it's three mortgage payments. There may be a way that we want to have some kind of tribunal to address this. If someone comes and says, whether or not they did it intentionally or not, I have this really high water bill, is there any relief available at the city? And maybe having some sort of a fund where we can pull out of the money? I mean, $3,000 is a lot of money for a family. It's not that much money for the city. It's not that much money to have the burden on everyone. So, I wonder if there is some policy change that we can be made here. And I understand that we're opening the door to everyone who has a slightly higher bill than they did the months before to come forward and say, and for everyone to be neglectful about their water usage. But at the same time, no one intends to have a leak in their house. No one means to have their water run for $3,600 worth in a quarter. And it seems like there may be a policy we could do there. So, that was just following on that. But the other question I had was from Mr. Johnson. So, we had talked during the budget meeting about possibly going to monthly billing for the water and we had talked about, so I think there had been some discussion about what that would cost in terms of doing the...
We talked about it mostly with the goal of reducing the size of the bill and spreading it out over a longer period of time. But the intent was that if that's all we were doing, that we would be doing estimated reads in between, not that we would have real reads.
Okay, that's what I was trying to remember is how we were, I just wanted to piggyback on that. If it were financially feasible to be doing just one quick monthly read where all we did was look for these outline so we can do like Commissioner Dubac got and get a knock on the door and say, look, this looks really high this month, you might want to check.
It's not feasible with existing equipment and existing staff. If we wanted to use the existing equipment and actually get a monthly read, I'd have to add to staff considerably to be able to get a monthly read instead of a quarterly read because they're reading constantly.
Yeah.
You know, it's not that they just go out once a quarter, they're reading every day.
You'd have to ramp them up four times theoretically.
Okay, that's my question.
Commissioner Levasser?
Just a couple of points of clarification. With regard to the fixed site tower that can take readings, that again would be taking readings from the exterior reading device and not from the interior?
No, there is no actual, it's actually taking a real read from the meter. All you carry to the outside is an antenna.
Okay, so that would eliminate the disconnect between...
You don't have this device that can break.
Okay, all right. So, that's definitely a positive there. Because I imagine what we're seeing on a number of occasions is people go to sell their house and they're surprised at how large the bill is because of the disconnect between the exterior reading device and the actual meter itself.
Somebody calls for a final, we finally get inside and get a real read.
Right. So, this would address that issue? This would address the issue of, you know, giving us an alert because all of a sudden the water is just running through extremely quickly? So, I would be curious as to what would be necessary to implement something like that and so we can make some determination whether that's cost-effective for us to do. The other aspect, and the reason I wanted to get a feel for how frequent this is, I do believe there's a potential solution as Commissioner Macy said. If, you know, you can kind of think of this in terms of what we pay for insurance. You never want to use insurance, but you're glad to have it when it's there, whether you have an auto accident or whatever the case might be. And if we anticipate that there's going to be a small amount of people who get hit, unfortunately, they're the unlucky ones. We don't know why there's all this problem, but we anticipate that, we build that into the numbers. We could address a policy that deals with that, make sure that people have the proper incentives to make sure they don't have leaks, but make sure they don't have a problem that's financially devastating for their family. But again, I want to know, get a feel for what type of numbers are we talking about? How frequently are we seeing these astronomical high bills?
Okay.
Commissioner Gibbs?
It's fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I, that would be great, but I, you know, the devil is going to be in the details because somebody calls us and says, I have an abnormally high water bill. I want, you know, compensation. Well, that means we got to have a staff person go out and inspect all their plumbing and find out if they've got a leaky toilet. And even then, you can't be sure that it wasn't because the cat turned on the water when they walked across the kitchen counter and the sink ran all night. So, verifying the actual reasons for that excessive use is going to be really tough. And what amount is excessive? I mean, if somebody usually has a $200 bill and then suddenly they've got a $400... I mean, if somebody usually has a $200 bill and then suddenly they've got a $400 bill, are we going to adjudicate every single one of those? I just, I think the, the devil is in the details in, in any sort of program like that.
If you're going to set up a system like that, I would suggest that there actually be a board appointed to be the adjudication body. I wouldn't want that to be a staff function.
Commissioner Dubb?
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess we could vet it if, if a policy were actually being discussed, but I, like, there just seems like mountains of questions, because I could cer, I can think of an endless number of scenarios where, you know, accidentally, but still my responsibility, I consume a ton of water. Like, my kids are drinking from the hose right before we leave for a week-long vacation, and they leave it on. I mean, should my neighbors cover that cost? Like, should the taxpayers of the city cover that cost? I guess that's the conversation we're having, but I'm not sure it's a reasonable question. If I fill up my pool, you know, should they cover that cost? If I get new sod and my, my bill goes up 1,000%, you know, should my neighbors cover that cost? And how, you know, we have some water users that do 80 bucks a quarter, and we have some that, I mean, the bills in the thousands are not unheard of regularly, right?
Well, I don't think they're very common for a residential.
Right.
I mean, it's not unusual for commercial.
So I just, are we talking about when someone has a spike and then it goes back to normal? And then what, we have an investigative body that looks into the causes of it? I just, I don't, I don't even know where to begin with it.
I think, I mean, one thing we need, look, there's, there's, part of the solution here is to make sure that people have the incentive not to use water, and they have the incentive to conserve water, and they have the incentive to make sure their toilets aren't leaking, and to make sure that their hoses are off, and that doesn't become, you know, a cost to everybody else. So you always have that burden where, you know, there will be, on occasion, legitimate what the heck happened? You know what I mean? Nobody knows, but the meter read what it read, and, and that's it. But I think, you know, the, the real long-term solution here is if we're serious about not just conserving water, but avoiding adjudication or anything like that, is if we have meters that we can ping on a regular basis and invest in those meters, and water payers can invest in those meters, then a couple things happen. One, you can find these abnormalities and alert the homeowner right away, and you're not waiting three months to find out, you know, that you've had a leaky sink for, or a leaky toilet for three months. You know right away, and you can, you know, curb that, that issue or, or stop that issue. And then from there, I think a lot of the, the issues would go away, because you don't have this disconnect, which I'm assuming is probably, I mean, the research I did quickly online, across the country, I mean, these meters aren't just made for oil oak, they're used everywhere, right? So, I mean, they have a fidelity that's acceptable by almost every municipality in the country. So this disconnect, though, seems to be the biggest issue that people have, where the outside meter doesn't match the inside, and it's not a matter of whether you use the water, it's just, hey, you know, you pretty much, you know, it accrued for a long time. But if those issues can erode with better technology, I think that's the first step. I don't, I don't know that you kind of need, or maybe you can reevaluate if you need any sort of additional body or forgiveness models or something like that. I think if you're gonna commit it to the technology which will solve the issue, then from there, you can see, does this problem exist anymore, and to what degree, and what does the city need to do? But if you do both, it seems kind of weird. You should, if you're gonna do the technology, do it first, and then see where you stand, and then if you need additional legislative support, then do that. Commissioner Macy?
So this is why I wanted to wait on this agenda item, so I could have the data about how often this happens, and how many, what the, what the number of these really high residential reads are. So, you're right, setting the standard would be really hard, and I think that would be something that we, as a policymaking body, would decide, would have to think hard about and decide on, do some research on, and, and decide about. So let's say we, we cut it at $1,000. There will be some people, no doubt, who try to cheat the system, but I think by and large, people who are a loc aren't thinking about ways that they want to, you know, get, skate away with their water bill on an annual basis. So I, I don't think that this would be a highly utilized system. And I'd just like to say, it's a lot cheaper than replacing all of the meters it's gonna be. Replacing all the meters is a million-dollar operation, and having a board that-
Several million dollars.
Several, sorry, several multimillion-dollar operation. And having a board that looks at 10 $2,000 bills every year is a lot cheaper.
Commissioner Dubb?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I guess I, the value of the modernized system isn't just in that we avoid these spiked bills, but residents do get alerted to leaks and other things that can help us as a community conserve water, which I think is a community goal. So I'm, I'm not saying I'm shut off to, to the concept of a board that, that would analyze these, these scenarios, but I certainly don't want to throw away upgrading the system, because I think that there's a financial benefit to individual households, as well as an environmental benefit to us as a community, for us to know. Like, if my water bill goes up and I know for a fact I haven't changed anything, something is wrong, and, and I can get it fixed.
And, and there is a, an investment, but there's also a savings too on the actual reading of the meters, so-
Right.
You know, there is a cash flow stream that comes into the city over time. So you spend a couple million, but you, I don't know what we would, it might take 10, 20 years, but, you know, you would, you would get that paid back as well. Commissioner Gibbs?
With the newer technology on the meters, probably, I don't know, I'm not a water meter expert, but DTE has something you can, an app for your phone that you can read your electric usage, and if, it'll alert you. So if you have, if all of a sudden your air conditioner turns on in the middle of the day, it'll send you an alert. And it's December, that would be something odd, and, but you would be alerted to it. And the same thing would go, I assume, for water, but that would give you an immediate alert as a resident or a business owner. And in the long term, that's, you know, you can call a plumber and have somebody out there in a day, right? And you're, you're saving water, you're saving money for yourself, you're saving money for the city by not having to have city employees come out and do what's needed for a water issue like that.
Think about a, a broken pipe in your basement, you're on vacation, you took that once-in-a-lifetime vacation to Florida. I mean, it'd be great to get that alert. I know of a particular friend of mine from high school, they're, they, they lived in a more rural area, his parents did, and you could see, finally neighbors noticed when water was coming out of the front door, because they had a burst pipe in the island in their kitchen. So that was, they didn't enjoy their Hawaiian vacation for their 30-year anniversary. But, yeah, I think, I think the technology brings, like Commissioner Gibbs said, Commissioner Dubbuck says, it, it does bring a lot of benefit, it does help, I think, mitigate a lot of these issues, it can save money, it's a good investment, we believe hypothetically, but we have to see the numbers. We, I know we looked at it before and we said, "Yeah, this might make a lot of sense." But I think, right now, without the data, I mean, look, we've said it before, do we have, you know, a, do we have an issue? Do we have a hypothetical situation, or do we have an incident or incidents? So if we're sending out 100,000 water bills and one of these pops up every 10 years, okay, do we rewrite all the ordinances and everything for one, or do we have a, a different policy way of addressing it? Or, Mr. Johnson, you said some of these don't come to your attention. Just because it's not a $2,000 water bill, it could be a $1,000 water bill, and that's still, it could be an issue for somebody. So having that information, that data, to the best that you have explanations of what happened, like this disconnect versus, you know, just a disagreement, or there was a leak identified, I don't know what data we're keeping, but I think that'd be very helpful to this commission to help shape our idea on how to, you know, move forward. Do we have a problem issue? Or do we have a policy issue? Or do we have an ordinance issue? Understanding the gravity and scale of the situation. Clearly, we empathize with the, with the homeowners here, because that, to them, is a huge issue, and it's, I, you know, I agree with Commissioner Dubbuck, like, goodness gracious, I mean, who, I, I just feel terrible for them. But also, looking at their problem, not just sympathetic to them as individuals, but is this a problem? How big is it? Not just, you know, the personal situation we're faced with, but what's the data show? Commissioner Gibbs?
Could we possibly instruct staff in the Treasury Department, I believe it would go to, to do some general analysis of huge number changes in water usage over the past year maybe, and maybe get a number of really high or at least doubled water bills?
Early some-
For individual, or for households? And I probably am not saying that, I, I know what I mean-
It's something that indicates some sort of-
Change or-
Difference, yeah, that, that, like, some statistical analysis that says, you know, based on all the water bills, regressing back, looking at, you know, previous bills by each property, you know, we saw these spikes, we had these calls on these spikes, because sometimes you may, like in Commissioner Dubbuck says, you may have a spike and it's well-anticipated. Yep, I watered my lawn, or I filled my pool. But in other cases, it's the unexpected that we want to measure to some extent, where we had complaints too. You need that in the form of a motion?
No, I, I, I'm not sure exactly what, what kind of data I can actually pull out. I, I'm sure I can pull out reads in excess of X amount, but I don't know whether I can easily make the system go back and compare it to previous reads.
And I don't know, what, is it on the BSA system? Because there's probably some, a long time ago, I was an expert on the BSA system, and I'm not for water. But I know there's a way that you can calibrate it or do something so that you can pull out extremes, you know what I mean? Somebody who uses it every day would have to do that. I, I, I don't know how, I fully admit I don't know how. I, I know it has been done, I know I've done it before, but I'm, for, not water reads.
We can look at it, and we can tell you what we're able to, to do.
That'd be great.
Commissioner Dubb?
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting if, if we have the cap, the data capability to see, how frequent is it that someone's usage goes up 300% or 400%, what, what we consider a spike, right? And then goes right back down. Like, is that common or uncommon? Where we see that dramatic change in usage for one month, and then it goes back? And out of those incidences, how often has someone come forward and complained? Do we, would we have record of that if they did come forward?
Yeah, I think we're logging the calls, aren't we?
I think the Treasury's office would probably have some idea of that.
So I, I think that would be interesting to see, is how often do you see a, a dramatic spike, and then a challenge from a resident?
And then what was the result? Was it because of the interior-exterior read, or was it because of a, something else, or undetermined?
And that would at least help know the extent to which, you know, folks are impacted, which I think lets us know, like, what exactly are we, are we dealing with here? And then how, what can be attributed to actual usage, or a leak that they weren't aware of, or accidental usage? Or is there a, a failure in the system? I, I guess those would be good questions to get answers to, just dig into this a little more. Sorry, I'm just spitballing.
So you'd like us to bring something back in a few weeks?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Do you want a motion on that?
I don't need it.
Okay. So you'll bring something back next week, or next meeting? Or the, the first meeting, it's by the first meeting in September?
That's pretty slick.
You said a few weeks. By the first meeting in September?
For the next meeting, reports have to be finished by Friday, so.
Don, you can say, "No, I can't do that, it's okay."
Okay, no, I can't do that.
I know, I know, I'm, I know I'm good at connecting the dots, but-
September will be fine.
Okay, September will be fine, all right.
That's appropriate.
All right, any other discussion on this one? We're gonna report back, we'll understand what the data shows. Check that one before we leave, make sure it's not leaking on the city behalf. Okay. All right, anything more on this one?
At least we didn't have the incident of where a, a very nice elderly man came to the podium and was convinced that the outside meter readers were allowing some space aliens to connect with his, with his house. That actually occurred a long time ago.
A space alien?
No, not a space alien, a gentleman who was convinced that his outside water meter was in fact in contact with space aliens.
That's why we use aluminum foil now.
Yes, I'm sure. We have all kinds of things that, that were against that, but at least that didn't become part of this conversation. But it, it did one time, a long time ago, when there was another water meter issue in front of us, so, at least-
The only thing I, the only thing I'd ask to add to that report, the powers have been patient enough here to stay here the entire night and hear this discussion about what we're doing for, you know, the 28,000, you know, customers that are, that are water customers in the future to, to avoid these pitfalls. But I think also to, you know, bringing back maybe a quick summary too on, you know, where our ordinance stands and things of that nature, just to say, because I, you know, from what we're looking at, the, the authority here for us to make, you know, and set policies of forgiveness and all of that really get complicated with how our ordinances are written. And I think we need to get a, an opinion on, you know, what we can do, and even if we could do something, could that be challenged by the 27,999 other, you know, ratepayers in water? You know what I mean? I mean, we got sued because of a technicality that, you know, in the 12-drain system with water, you know, that goes back 30, 40 years of how Oakland County billed us, and you found a clever lawyer that, you know, so I imagine, you know, even if you want to do something, you still have to worry about state law and everything else, so you don't get tripped up. So maybe, you know, not 20 hours of work, but just something that, you know, explains what is within the discretion of this commission. Because once we have an ordinance, we have to follow it. And the ordinance says, you know, we can't, you know, just willy-nilly, or, you know, if we believe somebody, not believe something, somebody forgive the water bills, it's all dependent on the reading on the meter.
The ordinance, as I recall, simply doesn't address giving credits.
Right. So having an understanding of that, and how it applies to the situation would be helpful as well. Commissioner Perush?
And I just think briefly, it's important to reiterate that if we do establish some system of credits for whatever reason, you know, it's not as if that money comes out of some magic pot in the sky. The other 28,000 ratepayers pick up that cost, and your point is well-taken. You know, how will those other 28,000 ratepayers feel about having to pick up more of the cost of the water than what they effectively use, just because there was some discrepancy in, in the bill, whether or not it was explainable or not? So you have to keep that in mind, that the bill has to be paid. The city of Detroit is gonna send us a bill on a regular basis for this amount of water, and it comes out of our system. And if an individual property owner doesn't pay the bill, the rest of us do, even if it's just, you know, one and one-hundredth of a cent for each of us. And that's, that's the fairness issue, you know? Is it fair for the rest of the ratepayers to pick up that when there is some unexplainable discrepancy? I personally don't think there's a really good answer there. But I think that's something we have to keep in mind. It's not as if there's some magic pot that we can draw on. If somebody doesn't pay, the rest of us do.
Right, and if we're relying on the meters in the ordinance as the read, the final judge, so to speak, because common sense would tell you, like, who would just randomly use 30, you know, $600 worth of water in three months? I mean, I think the case makes sense, I mean, I empathize, but if we have an ordinance that says, "No, the judge, jury, and whatever, is that meter, and it's tested and it says it's valid," it, you know, I mean, I don't want to say our hands are tied, but, you know, we can't go back and retroactively rewrite an ordinance to, you know, I mean, that's just not, that's just not possible, or, I mean, you can't do that, you can't go back in time, we don't have a time machine, so. But also, just kind of understanding what we can do, if something at all. I don't want to make it look bleak, but if there is anything that we have jurisdiction over, I'd like to know.
Well, as far as the powers are concerned, we, we can't have the meter tested another time, but-
And the city would pay for that, right?
Yeah, I'd pay for it, I wouldn't have a problem paying for it.
Can we do that as well as part of this? Get it sent back, tested one more time, and then also say, you know, are there occasional acts of lightning and God and things like that that happen? You know, maybe look a little bit, ask the meter company, like, what is the chances that something could happen where, usually it's, it's read where, you know, the, the disconnect with the, the outside inside, and what I've read is that a lot of times it's actually the meter's slow. So, you know, the city's getting the bad end of the deal most of the time when, when the meters fail. It's never, it's rare, if not ever documented, where it speeds up. It's never, it's rare, if not ever documented, where it speeds up.
Generally, as meters get older, they corrode on the inside and they get gummed up with gunk that they came out of the water and they slow down. So, you know, 99.6 is actually a pretty darn good read.
It is almost a 30-year-old meter though.
Right, it's a 1989 meter, I think.
Yeah, so.
So maybe we get it tested again and then if there is any other explanation we can, that any of the manufacturers can think of, we can at least try to vet those here as well. But, you know, I don't want to give false hope, but, you know, it's one of these things that our ordinance is what it is.
I would like to point out one thing, because one thing was said that was incorrect here tonight, there was a reference to this going, that the taxpayers would be picking this up. Commissioner Purush had it right, it's the ratepayers. Now, oftentimes, those are the same people, but we don't use taxes to support water.
Okay, so you're clear? There's mud?
There's mud, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, this brings us to the second added item. Commissioner LaVassar wanted to talk about the policy regarding notifications.
I don't know, notifications is, it's with regard to the lag in time between when the PUD was approved and when they actually broke ground here. And I'm just wondering whether-
The question is, how long is the approval good for?
Yeah, well, I presume that there's no sunset that was put in place when this PUD was approved. You know, the question is, could we, as a matter of policy, if we approve a PUD, put a sunset in there? You know, we're approving that, but it's conditioned upon you breaking ground in, say, two years or something like that.
Mr. Twain?
Well, I guess a little background on it. The planned unit development is a zoning district within the zoning ordinance, just like general business, the CBD, one-family residential. So it is an actual zoning district that you are approving to change the zoning from its prior use to a new zoning district. Generally, you don't have a sunset on that change of zoning. Having said that, one of the provisions under the planned unit development is a requirement for a development agreement to be executed by the developer in the city. So you have a signed agreement that the commission blesses and approves as part of the rezoning. In some cases, we have, under conditional rezonings, which is a different animal, instituted a period of time where they have to file for a building permit. Isn't really a reference to start construction, but it might reference filing for a building permit where it goes back to the underlying zoning district. Having said that, I don't believe, and in this case, well, the planning commission saw it 2014. For a variety of reasons, the petitioner postponed action in coming to the city commission until May of 2015. They actually filed for building permits roughly around February of this year. I don't see that as a long time for this project of this size. Keep in mind, the city commission's approval is a site plan approval. At that point, they still have to go, generally a developer has to go get their financing because they have to have a project that's been approved by the city before anybody will really lend on it unless they're going to self-finance. Then they have to get their construction documents done for the buildings as well as the engineering and storm detention before they can get a permit. So there's a lot of work. The bigger the project, there's a lot of work they have to do with architects and engineers in terms of the timing before they get to the permit. And then obviously, if you look at the time period when they submitted in February to when they actually broke ground, that's basically city review and kicking back to them for other reviews. So a lot of the time is eaten up with other activities after it's been blessed. Whether you could stick something in a development agreement that says it sunsets in two years, I guess number one is, what's the purpose of that? Because the developer's tied to the PUD rezoning and only building the project you've blessed. Unless your intent is to tell them they can't build that anymore for whatever reason or alter it, I'm not sure I see a reason to sunset it, at least at the commission level. There's opportunities where we have other things that do sunset that are administratively extended. Site plans, if you read the zoning ordinance, are technically good for a year to issue a permit, so if you're zoned correctly and you can get to it. So there are sunsets. My concern or caveat on a bigger project that takes some time is, what's the intent of the sunset? To bring it back to the city commission? To say the project can't go forward? Which I think Mr. Gillum may have commentary on if the developer still wants to proceed in terms of litigation versus notification of when to start is or where things- Like I said, I don't think that, given the time period of this particular project, the two-year, two-and-a-half years that really were between city commission approval and permits, a long period of time. Harrison Loft took some four years between the approval and when they started. So I guess I'll throw that out. If you wanted to do it, I think where you would put in a sunset clause would be in the required development agreement. And that way, the developer would be executing a document that makes him well aware of the fact that his plan sunset in two years or three years.
Commissioner Dubach? So that would be on a case-by-case basis where we would opt to put that into a given development agreement? Are you saying we would make it a part of our standard planning operation?
Probably for lack of being able to tell you when to do it and not to do it, I would do it almost in every one of them. You know, the time period you made, because the developer is going to look at the agreement, the development agreement, not that it's a negotiation, but they're going to treat it like a negotiation and you're going to have their attorney and people standing in front of you saying, well, I need more than a year. I need 24 months. I need 36 months. So you're going to have, you're going to get into that with them on an individual basis for sure. Now, some of the smaller ones, I referred back to the conditional rezonings that you've seen, where they're, it's a single use and it's like Sonic moved in in the CBD. A one-year period either to go or don't go has been what we've done under the conditional rezonings. And those simply say they revert back to the underlying zoning if you don't pull a permit. But that's not a lengthy development agreement like you've had in this case. Did I confuse you?
A couple of things occur to me. First of all, I think probably one of the variables that was at play here in terms of extending the time between they actually signed the development agreement and it actually started was the fact that they're using, it appears, some HUD financing? And that takes a long time. That's like going through the MEDC and we've had projects and we've, there's one currently on our plate now that is dealing with the MEDC in terms of getting financial assistance and credit, whatever is available through the state of Michigan. That's an extraordinarily long process that takes years to get through. And HUD is much worse in terms of the time operation. So that's, I think, a variable that's a little bit different here that other projects are not involved with. The second thing is that I think that this is just a very unusual circumstance with this particular development. There are, I'm sure, in the community, there are other projects much smaller that the time gap between when they were approved and when they actually broke ground was pretty much the same as in this situation. But it didn't involve all kinds of equipment showing up at 6:00 in the morning to take out 200 trees and the amount of community uproar that this project has engendered because of what is going on there. I think it's very, very unusual in that way and generated therefore a whole lot of community discussion about, well, we weren't around in 2014 and we didn't get any notice and so on and so forth. My guess is that this is a very, very unusual in that regard, just because of the nature of the project itself, the size, the location, the fact that it was school property and so on and so forth. A whole lot of variables that are almost never involved with any other project. That doesn't mean we don't take a look at some of these issues that we've been talking about, but I just think that the chances of something like this happening again are really, really small, just because of the uniqueness of the variables that are in truth for this specific project.
Well, and the trees were a main driver behind it as well, and I think we've taken, you know, measures to at least have this conversation every time there is a PUD in front of us or any sort of, you know, agreement or development agreement before this commission or the planning commission that we are laser-targeting not just trees, by the way. I can tell you with the leadership of Ann Vara on the planning commission, we are looking at, okay, where's your, you know, where's the bioswales? What, you know, environmental features are you putting in here? Commissioner Douglas literally gets down to the detail of what kind of trees are you having. She loves Bradford pears. Just kidding, just kidding. So, I mean, this is, I don't want to say a learning curve, but this is something that, you know, clearly in this modern era of development, the excitement in Royal Oak and just in this region, we're seeing a transition where school properties came up for sale. I mean, that's unprecedented. This hasn't happened in 100 years of, we are buying property to build schools, not selling property to build homes, right? As far as the community. So I agree with Commissioner Purush. It's a very unusual circumstance where you have these, this condition and will it persist moving forward? Well, it will in certain areas, but we do have at least that stopgap in place to take a look and be intelligent human beings and, you know, execute our mission of being, you know, a tree city. And so I think, I agree, it's somewhat of a unique situation. Commissioner Douglas?
I will point out, and perhaps should have done so earlier, that the site, the developer of this site is planting 325 trees.
Right, right. I mean, it is a challenge when you see mature trees go down, but 50 years from now, 70 years from now, there'll be 200 to 300 beautifully mature trees that are planted in a way that are disease-resistant and all of these other things. That is a good point to mention.
I'll look forward to seeing them.
I'll be glad. So, I mean, it strikes me that the, it was the element of surprise that brought this, bubbled this up so quickly. And we saw it with Normandy Oaks as well. I mean, people, you know, the people voted to sell that land. They knew it was going to be developed and yet when the bulldozers showed up, people, you know, threw their hands in the air and said, I didn't know this was going to happen now. Is there a role for us as a city to either communicate that, those things, or to require or at least encourage developers to let people know when that stuff is going to happen? And I'm asking that question, I don't have an answer as to whose role that should be and I'm reluctant to make it the city's job, but it, people will feel more comfortable if they get a heads up a week before that something's going to happen.
Well, and I'll also ask, you know, to what extent can you, you know, where do you have diminishing returns? Because in some cases, I feel like we've gone above and beyond anything that any community has ever done and you still have people that, you know, say, oh, my gosh, why didn't you, you know, tell me about this? And it's like, I don't know more what we could do. We sent you mailers, it was all over the press, it was sent out email blasts. I mean, there's a point to where you exhaust the mediums other than knocking on the door, shaking the person's hand, identifying who they are and then following up later to make sure they remember the conversation. I mean, I'm not trying to say we can't do anything better, but at what point, what is, you know, you get diminishing returns after some extent. It'd be interesting to hear what some of the experts' opinions are as it relates to communication, because, I mean, we're doing a practice that's standard for many municipalities, right? Send out the notices, you know, put them on postcards. Do we need to do something different in this modern era? Because maybe back in the day when everyone waited for the postman to get their mail and they went through it and read all their insurance quotes and credit card applications, maybe now people, the mail is just a necessary evil, you know, and people are using different mediums. Yes, Commissioner Macy?
So this is interesting to talk about. And one thing that was brought up several times tonight is that we do use this 300-foot radius and then there are other communities that use a larger radius. And to me, that seems like a fairly easy distinction to make, like it doesn't cost us that much to send postcards, does it? I mean, if we have a larger radius, I mean, the fact that only 30 people got notices or fewer than 40 people got notices of this development suggests that maybe our radius could be a little larger for developments of this size.
Well, keep in mind, this is in Madison Heights. I think 31 Royal Oak residents got notices and there's a lot of commercial properties around it, but also Auburn Hills is a very spread-out community. So your lots, I mean, you could go 300 feet and not hit all but two neighbors in certain areas, yeah.
True, but I'm just saying, it seems like a-
But the question's fair, like, what is that reasonable, you know?
Well, if I can, staff's relying on the state statute. Our position has been not to exceed what the state statute says for a basic reason. We believe if we give wider notice, it opens, if we turn someone down on a development project, the developer could use the fact that we've used wider notice against the city and why did you do so? 300 feet is the state statute reference and we go 300 feet from every property corner. And it's a time-consuming effort to identify all of those properties within 300 feet. It is a time-consuming effort to print off the postcards and put them out, not just the postage.
So you're suggesting that by going beyond that, there's a liability hazard where a developer could use and say, hey, you stacked the deck because you didn't want the project and you brought in lots of people to be against it or-
Right. And generally, in my experience, is once you go out 300 feet, the neighbors talk to the neighbors and the neighbors talk to the neighbors and you get a much wider audience anyways.
And we've seen, Mr. Twain, very high response rates. I've been here for a while now where we've had projects in front of us in planning where you've had a packed room. And we've gone out 300 feet. In this case, I don't remember a packed room, you know, albeit 31 people were notified. You know, I don't, I can't recall.
Don't suffer from lack of resident participation.
But in other cases, you know, we get packed rooms when there's passion.
I don't know if you were on the planning commission that time?
Not the planning commission that time, you're right, and that's a particular one. But when it came to the city commission for approval in '15. Commissioner Macy?
So I don't find that to be a very compelling argument, that, you know, maybe the developer would get mad that we had too well-informed the community and thus people complained and we didn't let them do their development. I would rather stand in the side of the residents who didn't want the development in the first place than the developer who got mad at us about telling too many people. So I understand that there is a burden to going out farther to 1,000 feet. I understand there's both the staff time burden and the financial burden of the additional postcards, but I don't know, to me, that seems like an easy one.
Commissioner LaVassar?
I suspect the greater issue from a legal standpoint is if we treat one developer different from another. So if in one instance we say we're going out 300 feet, in another we're saying we're going out 1,000 feet, I think that's probably more likely to cause a problem than if we have a standard policy that this is what we're going to do.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dubach?
There's one more, there's no more press here, but I think it should be said on record because there's a bunch of people talking about selling off or destroying city green space. And I think it's worth saying that that has not happened. In fact, when it was brought to the table by the city manager to sell off little pocket parks, everyone in the commission gave him a resounding no in saying we are protecting our green space. In fact, we've created additional green space in our city with the Central Park and Eagle Plaza. And Normandy Oaks has found space for the vast majority of our residents who've never played golf there. So there were some folks upset about, that was never a city green space, that was a school property. No one's selling off Royal Oak green space except by the vote of the people to do the section in Normandy Oaks that allowed us to do what we're doing in Normandy Oaks. But it's been raised before and in my experience, there is no appetite on the part of this city to sell off any piece of city green space, no matter how small. So it's just us, I guess, but I thought it should be said.
All right. Brings us to the end of the discussion here and the end of the agenda.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Commissioner Macy?
Or?
Supported by Commissioner LaVassar. Any discussion on this adjournment? The vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Something messing with me?